Bring back the January work session. And I'd like to add an agenda item right after consent, so it would be a new 3A for personnel to add extension of the superintendent's contract.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Byer, to remove consent item A from the agenda and to the January work session and to add a personnel item to bring Dr. Lewis's contract for approval before, right after the consent items. Is there, it's been seconded by Ms. Byer, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Approved unanimously.
Ms. Carol Goff, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
All right, it's been let's see, moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Byer to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor? And I vote aye, it's approved unanimously. And next we have our board agenda, Board of Education meeting minutes from November 6, 2025.
Move approval of the meeting minutes from the November 6 work session?
Second?
Been moved by Ms. Chavez to approve and seconded by Ms. Byer to approve the board meeting minutes from November 6, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Sorry about that. Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
It's approved unanimously. And now we're going to move on to general public comment. A quick review of the rules. Please first state your name. If speaking for an organization, please state your name and the name of the organization. Second, speakers are asked to present their comments at a specific time. We have a few speakers today, so we will have one minute. When the yellow light comes on, you have 30 seconds left to start winding up your remarks. When the red light comes on, it will beep, which indicates that your time is up. Complaints about named staff, students, or parents should not be voiced in open session. However, we are very interested in hearing your concerns with regards to public education, safety of students, and to the operation of the school system. Finally, the board members will listen carefully and consider the comments, but we do not engage in a discussion with speakers. Our first speaker is Lauren Sartain, followed by Rachel Owens.
Hi, I'm Lauren Sartain. I'm a DPS parent, a K-12 policy expert, and I'm also a candidate for school board. You'll talk about the budget tonight, and that budget must address one of our biggest problems, declining student enrollment. DPS can be the best option for families and create more job security by putting dollars back into schools. And that means doing a few things, creating efficient HR systems, providing aftercare and busing, and maintaining safe school buildings. We have a hard path ahead. There's at least a billion dollars in unfunded building costs, and we may even have to close schools. Closing schools is the hardest thing a board ever has to do. I lived in Chicago when they closed nearly 50 schools in a year. As a researcher, I talked to teachers and students about their experiences, and I learned what the district could have done better. I have what it takes to do the hard work because I've done it before, and that's why I'm running for board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Owens, and I teach science at Northern High School. I'm here tonight with the Sustainable Schools Coalition of Durham Public Schools. We are back tonight because we're still waiting for a climate action plan. Also, we saw in the CEO's presentation to you tonight that he is recommending the termination of SiteLogic's contract. For informational purposes, we want to make sure you understand that the termination of this contract means that DPS's energy conservation program is no longer. The contract employs our only energy managers in the district. This program and these people are beyond invaluable. Actually, they do have a value. It's actually measurable, and it's saving DPS literally millions of dollars each year. One of our many questions that we have for you tonight is why is DPS choosing to terminate a contract for a program that is saving us more money than it is costing? What is the rationale for that decision? Through the dashboard, we know that more money has been saved through this program in one quarter than DPS pays for the whole year.
Thank you. We have Mirian Masamba, followed by, I think this says Catalina Sanchez, Teloza?
Good evening. My name is Mirian Masamba, and I'm a senior at City of Medicine Academy, and I'm here with the Durham Sustainable Schools Coalition. The first time I spoke here was actually this time last year. I was a junior, and I distinctly remember speaking about the dangers of complacency and how important it is that the board follows its own 2021 resolution to pass a district-wide climate action plan. Time has passed, and I come to you again, but this time I'm frustrated. We spent emails, or we spent time sending emails and letters. We've spoken during public comment, and we've had individual meetings with local leaders. Yet despite all this, the Climate Action Plan remains unseen by the board. And each time a request is sent, we have assurance that it will be presented next month. At this point, it's hard to not wonder how many more months students are expected to wait for a climate action plan when the climate crisis is affecting us every day. What makes this even more concerning is the return of that same complacency I talked about a year ago. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catalina Sanchez-Teloza. And before I save my time to Matthias, I want to say that a climate action plan not only saves us money, but it also saves the lives of children because I don't even know how to explain this. Climate is what keeps us alive, and the environment also. And if we don't save it, then we're gonna die.
Next, we have Matthias. Mathieu? Mathieu, followed by Sharon Bagatell. He did her remaining time.
Hello, school board. My name is Matthias Matthew. I'm a junior at Northern High School, a member of the Superintendent Student Advisory Board, and a student leader for the Sustainable Schools Coalition. I'm gonna have to skip some of this, but the decision to the decision to cut the energy conservation program will is remarkably is a remarkably I'm sorry. I'm going off script. It is a remarkably bad decision. This is a program that saved the district over a million dollars and cost less than a tenth of that. If we were to, okay, if we were to take the logic at its word that this is about money, there are so many questions. Like if the budget is this tight, why are we paying hundreds of dollars to heat and cool the entire old northern campus while only one building is occupied and used? And are we really going to pay to maintain a school with no kids in it over a program that is saving the district money? An oversight this size makes it seem like the people who handle these programs aren't talking to each other and making the right decisions. I'm sorry, I'm out of time, but thank you.
You can go ahead.
Go ahead.
You're Sharon, correct?
Yes. Okay. Good evening. My name is Sharon Bagatell, and I'm the National Youth Action Coordinator for Citizens Climate Lobby, a former public school teacher and a Durham resident. As youth action coordinator, I've had the privilege of awarding a national second prize to the Durham Sustainable Schools Coalition for their amazing civic engagement in advocating for a DPS climate action plan. And this great work has even caught the attention of our member of Congress and gotten national publicity. Tonight, I'm here to express my deep concern about the termination of the contract with SiteLogic that effectively guts DPS's energy conservation program. The numbers show clearly that the energy conservation program saves DPS at least a million dollars annually, paying for itself and way more. With rising utility rates, I ask, what is the rationale for cutting a program that is saving money on utilities? The public and these students here tonight need to understand. I also ask, how does the board plan to fulfill its commitment?
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Rodriguez, followed by Aiden Mendoza-Maya.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Rodriguez, and I am representing the National Sunrise Movement as the campaign manager of the DSA Sunrise Hub. As of right now, we have three years, 222 days, 17 hours, 6 minutes, and 0 seconds until the damage that the climate change has caused to the earth is irreversible. We want to thank you for your response to us and your willingness to meet with us and work with us, for empowering us to innovate, serve, and lead. We hope that our conversations next week are very productive and that we can take steps towards a solution together. The federal government is not speaking and working for the people of America. The people in power, our representatives, are acting only for themselves, protecting their wallets, their reputation, and status. Corporations like Big Oil pour their money into election cycles, and now our leaders protect only the wealthiest few. When the federal government isn't acting for us, we need local leaders to step up. It is your responsibility to act. The profit of Big Oil should not be going to corrupting our government. It should be going into our communities. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ada Mendoza, and I am a recruitment lead of the Durham School of the Arts Sunrise Hub. Altogether, the five big oil companies reported combined profits of $196.3 billion last year, more than the economic output of most countries. Instead of reinvesting in equitable renewable energy solutions, major international oil companies have funneled their profits into stock buybacks, shareholder dividends, greenwashing campaigns, and further backtracking on their climate commitments. This is the money we want. Instead of lining the pockets of billionaires, this money could rebuild our communities, feed the hungry, create new jobs, and fund the switch to clean energy and save our futures. We want these companies who are on the forefront of CO2 emissions to pay for green initiatives to make up the damages they have caused to the environment, and remanding laws that force these companies to give their profits and their super fund to pay for the Green New Deal for schools. This will bring money back to the district, back to Durham Public Schools and districts across North Carolina. We need a Make Plutters Pay resolution.
Thank you. I have Sasha Wolfram, followed by Ryder Sammons.
Hello, my name is Sasha Wolfram, and I'm here representing DSA Sunrise. This pack's weekend, DPS got three snow days. I'm sure this impacted all of you, but it's only early December. How many more snow days will we be getting this year? Probably a lot. As the climate crisis worsens, temperatures become more and more extreme. This means record highs and record lows, and we know that these temperatures are disproportionately affecting the minorities in our community. We now have three years, 222 days, no, yeah, 17 hours, 3 minutes, and 20 seconds left. Your voices have power. Use them. Protect us. We need to act now. Make plutters pay, and we thank you for your responses to our emails and willingness to work with us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryder Sammons, and I teach science at City of Medicine Academy, and I'm here tonight with the Durham Sustainable Schools Coalition. As an environmental science teacher, part of my job is to educate students about anthropogenic climate change. I've appreciated the work that Durham Public Schools has done to minimize their carbon footprint and felt inspired by their commitment to source 80% of energy for operations from renewable sources by 2030 with the passing of the 2021 Renewable Energy Resolution. We are now under five years from that. We are now under five years from that goal with no public plan in place, and soon there will be only one employee responsible for overseeing this transition. How can we, anyone, expect a massive transformation in our energy budget without providing support for this initiative? As we cut programs like the ECP and miss targets for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, we give our students a worse world than the one we started with. We appreciate good intentions, but what we need, really desperately need, is a climate action plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, can we have Jason Fife, followed by Holly Harden?
Good evening. My name is Jason Fife, and I'm a DPS parent and a PTA leader at Lyons Farm Elementary, where every instructional space is in use, including shared offices and a repurposed media center, and overcrowding is already disrupting our programming. Our attendance zone is projected to grow by another 5,000 people over the next five years. We are the second fastest growing zip code in the county, and we're already over capacity. DPS has made measurable progress. Nearly 90% of schools met or exceeded growth targets last year, and enrollment is stabilizing, tangible wins worth celebrating, and yet public confidence is still fragile. We ask that DPS commit to sharing a clear enrollment and space management plan for our school before January 10th showcase of schools. We also ask that Lyons Farm be included in, included in both interim and long-range planning, including the potential relocation of Durham Pre-K to relieve space immediately and consideration in future bond discussions. Thank you for your time and for protecting the success that you all helped create.
I would like to cede my time to Yair, the next speaker.
The next speaker is Yair Pinya-Rangel.
And Dr. Lewis and members of the board, we should not have to repeatedly plead on behalf of our families. Since January 20 of this year, our community has been under attack. It is difficult to describe the daily anxiety we are experiencing. This is our personal pain, and I don't believe we need to publicly display it in the hope that you will listen to us. Some of us, our parents have received copies of the talking points given to school staff. These talking points demonstrate an underlying lack of empathy toward our community. For example, phrases like this one, "In democracy, people can disagree about policies and still respect each other." Are you telling us that this is a normal time in our democracy? Are you saying that we can disagree but show respect others? Show respect people who support policies that allow us to be racially profiled and be taken from our school bus stop or supermarket parking lot? Do you really believe you're protecting us by taking away neutral standing? 11 months have passed since all of this started. It's been over three months since we presented policies 5120 and 4321 for your review. Please approve these policies. Show us that when you say our safety is your priority, it's not just empty words. Show us that we're 35% of your students are worth fighting for. We don't need talking points. We need a policy that will protect us from those who see us as less than human. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Tony Macias, followed by Ruby Valdez, and then Patricia Rusick and Katie McConnell.
I'll also cede my time to Ruby. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lucy Rubi Valdez. First and foremost, I am a community member and a Duke University alum. The safety of our students is our priority. I think we can all agree on that. It is also written throughout the front office quick reference immigration-related concerns, the teacher talking points, and the key talking points for Sunday messages to families. However, right now, what that looks like per these documents is asking teachers to remain neutral verbally and instructionally while inadequately preparing teachers, staff, and personnel to confront ICE if need be. I want to start with neutrality. What does that mean to you? Is it professional? Or is it dangerous? If communities are under attack, it is essential to discuss, name, and counteract. We can no longer accept the luxury of neutrality. Too much is at stake. When it comes to classroom dialogue and management, teachers are being asked to remain neutral and support the notion that people can disagree about policies and still respect each other. I would like to recognize that the entire first page of teacher talking points allows conversations to potentially spew hurtful rhetoric in the name of different perspectives. It assumes and acknowledges human rights as a topic of debate instead of focusing on the fact that human rights are being infringed. I'm here today because students have a right to know if their teachers are ready to loudly, actively, and safely support them if ICE makes an appearance at their school. I want to make it clear that following your school's established protocol for law enforcement is not enough. This is not law enforcement. The outcomes, as we have all seen, are severely different. How do we ensure that teachers, staff, and most importantly, students are prepared for that difference? I want to end by saying that our students deserve unwavering safe spaces, and if they don't feel safe, you cannot prevent fear-driven absenteeism. Schools must be safe havens, free from the threat of deportation and the discrimination we have seen against our children as a result. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Rusick, and I teach at Little River. We now have dates, a plan, a promise written in winter's span, a step in the right direction, yet many steps remain. A plan is only as strong as its follow-through. Children breathe in real time, not on a delayed timeline. December may bring some repair. We still ask, what about the air? Health is not a footnote, not a problem to be paused. When health is at stake, action cannot wait. Mold does not follow meeting schedules or break for holidays or wait politely for decisions to be made. Our children are watching what adults choose. They learn from our actions. The lesson they deserve is clear. When something is harmful, we fix it. Thank you.
Hi. I wanted to say thank you for fixing the door. And I am grateful that this door is fixed, truly, but gratitude cannot erase a pattern, a pattern where preventable problems have been ignored, a pattern where communication is inconsistent or nonexistent, a pattern where the people who work closest with children, teachers, support staff, we're expected to compensate for broken systems without resources and without urgency. I stand here tonight because I believe that Durham Public Schools can be better than this. But belief alone aren't going to keep our kids safe. Belief alone won't retain families. Belief alone won't repair the trust. Thank you for fixing the door. Now I'm asking you, parent to leader, employee to employer, please fix the systems that keep breaking before something irreversible happens. Thank you.
Thank you. And this concludes our public comment. Next, we have our consent agenda.
Chair Harold Goff, I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Byers to approve the consent agenda, items B through F. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. It passes unanimously. And let's see. And now, this is where we have added the item to, the personnel item to amend the Superintendent Lewis's contract. There any discussion?
Ms. Harold Goff, I'd like to offer a motion to extend the contract of Superintendent Dr. Anthony Lewis for an additional year to include a $2,500 investment, one-time investment in annuity of his selection, as well as 40 day hours of comp time.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by, may not come.
Patino.
Seconded by Ms. Amstead to approve the contract for Dr. Lewis to include a $2,500 contribution to an annuity of his choice and 40 hours of comp time, compensatory. The, and to extend his contract by one year, which is the max that we can do at this time. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. It passes unanimously.
Ms. Harold Goff, can I make just a couple comments on that?
Sure.
Congratulations, Dr. Lewis. This vote comes after a full evaluation by the board for the 2024-2025 school year. We unanimously have voted to extend your contract. And we have several things that we're excited about that are attributes of our confidence and your ability to lead the system. You arrived in the midst of adversity, bringing a willingness to do some difficult work that we knew we needed to keep student achievement high, safety and security at the forefront, as well as physical stewardship. When you arrived, you navigated transportation challenges. You figured out how we were going to navigate a budget deficit, as well as thinking about how students are growing. You also did a lot of community engagement when you arrived to Durham, and as we, all of us have been around the community here, so many people who are appreciative of those listening and learning sessions that allowed Durham to build trust in your leadership. Over this last school year, 90% of Durham Public Schools have seen growth, which is what we're here about for. More than half of our schools earned an A, B, or C grade with the highest number of A schools since the pandemic. That is to be commended, and we're really excited about that. The board also is really excited about expectations as we look forward to the next couple of years. You've laid out a vision around DPS being a premier school system, and we know that your work leading our educators towards increasing academic performance for students, increasing a culture where educators want to work, will help us become that premier school system. It's understood that increasing our academic performance for our scholars is also our highest expectation. We know that we also have challenges ahead as far as attacks on public education, and we look forward to working with you towards that vision and also fighting for public schools. So, thank you. More members in the other? From you, Dr. Lewis.
Let me just say this. I want, want to, first of all, thank the board for the confidence. Yes, this year, past 15, 16 months have been challenging. Tried to lean in to all of the challenges. I don't work in isolation. I have a team of people, but most importantly, it's the folks that are in the buildings, the folks that are closest to our students that are, that's why I come to work every day, to, to, to ensure that we are removing barriers, creating systems that support the work that, that they do. I was telling my Superintendent Principal Advisory Council this morning that as a sign on my desk that says, is what I'm doing or about to do going to improve student achievement? And so that, for me, has always been my why as it relates to decisions, as relates to how I approach this work. Chair Amstead did mention that there are challenges remain. Yes, there are challenges that remain, but I do believe that we have the right people in this system, you know, from our ICE to our bus safety assistants, to classroom teachers, to our leaders in our buildings. We have the right people to get this work done. The factor of the matter is, we just need to continue to work on removing barriers that may impede their, their work and, and respect them. And I was so appreciative of Superintendent Green, Mo Green's strategic plan. And I do believe we do need to revere all of our, our educators. And so when we think about the work that needs to be done, the number one decisive factor in terms of improving student outcome is the classroom teacher and all those adults that support the work around the classroom teacher. So I'm excited about the future, but yes, we have a lot of more work to do, and I'm ready to continue the work. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. All right. Are we ready to move on to the next item on the agenda? Which is our Policy Committee Updates. The Policy Committee Update has been added for information only. So, next is the Board Policy Committee, Policy 5120, Relationship with Law Enforcement. This is for, yes, this is for information and for discussion. Dr. Giovanni.
Thank you, Chair Harold Goff, board members, Dr. Lewis, members of the community. If you could please pull up the PowerPoint, and while that is being pulled up, there are multiple items in the board docs, and so I would direct everyone's attention to those documents as well. We're going to go through the PowerPoint regarding this, but in the precis, you will see that there was significant discussion at the Policy Committee meeting, which is chaired by Ms. Carter Otten with members Natalie Byer and Emily Chavez. And at this last meeting, there was quite a bit of robust conversation regarding this policy and some clarifications to administration around what it is that the board desires for administration to include in a revision of Policy 5120. Policy 5120 Relationship with Law Enforcement is, was adopted on October 22nd, 2020 as part of the Board's Policy Manual Transition Project. For those who were here from 20, January 2019 through June 2021, including COVID, which is when this policy was adopted, if you look at the date, we went out in March and we weren't back yet. So, all of these meetings were done over Zoom, and so I think perhaps I could have contributed to some of the-
Dr. Giovanni, can you add some change in slides as needed?
Yes, thank you. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, what we have, what was revealed to us is what occurred during the, that COVID transition process is that there was a 2017 version of Policy 4321 that existed in the old DPS Policy Manual. I was only aware of the 2015 version, and we did include portions of the 2015 version of 4321 in the new 5120, but it did not, I did not have, was not aware of the 2017 version. Next slide, please. Once we realized that the, did I say next slide? Back one, please. I'm sorry. Thank you. Once that was shared, that the policy, the 2017 version had not been addressed by the community and several board members, we then began to attempt to locate that policy, and once it was located, we have now addressed that in quite a bit of detail. Committee Chair Carter Otten prepared a very detailed PowerPoint explaining what was missing from 5120 that had existed in Policy 20, in the 2017 version of 4321. As part of that, again, I direct your attention to the precis that list out five areas. Just for transparency's sake, there are additional suggestions that weren't in 2017 that have been suggested and will be addressed in additional detail at the next Policy Committee meeting in January. However, at this time, the draft of the policy that you see in board docs addresses or references these five missing, or four missing areas from the 2017 version. Next slide, please. Prior to that, there was a request by the Policy Committee to add that the MOU with the Durham County Sheriff's Office would be published on the school system website, and that language is added as a directive in the new revised version, proposed version of 5120. Next slide, please. The language, as you see here in the red, is the proposed additional language for the MOU with the Sheriff's Office. Next slide, please. Now, addressing the four areas that were left out of the new 5120, accepting interpretation, which would be the fifth area, which will be discussed at the end. This first, this is the old language that was included in 4321. Next slide, please. In the, the Policies Committee Suggested Amendment to 5120 addresses that missing language with the red language that you see here. Next slide, please. Policy 4321 is addressing warrants that, this is the language that was in existence in old 4321 in the 2017 version. So, the principal shall notify the superintendent of warrants served, and the superintendent's office shall maintain a record of these warrants. Next slide, please. The language is verbatim to be added into the existing policy 5120. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The next language that was in existence since 4321 addresses student information and includes school resource officers' ability to access that and that it has to be in a FERPA compliant way or pursuant to a judicial order or lawfully issued subpoena. Next slide, please. This language is included almost verbatim as a suggestion from the policy committee to be added into existing policy 5120. Next slide, please. This old language that was in 4321 specifically addresses immigration and custom enforcement requests with regard to the schools. Next slide, please. This language is revised somewhat, but does address that any request to gather information, interview students, or access a school site by any law enforcement officer or federal agency for immigration enforcement or monitoring purposes shall be immediately forwarded to the superintendent or designee for review and further guidance. The superintendent or designee shall immediately notify the board of any such request. Next slide, please. This is the old language that was a directive for law enforcement officials to provide interpretation when interviewing or notifying any limited English proficient students or parents or guardians. Next slide, please. This language has not yet been addressed. As the policy committee requested that we determine what the current practices were based on conversations with DPS Safety and Security, the Multilingual Resource Center, and the ESL Department. It is the practice in Durham Public Schools that external agencies do provide that interpretation for manners, matters that are non-DPS related. And that was consistent across all of the three departments that may have occasion to interact with law enforcement and limited English proficient families. Next slide, please. At this time, happy to answer any questions or open for discussion. And this is, policy is on for first reading.
Board members? Ms. Carter Otten?
Thanks so much, Dr. Giovanni. Quick question, I'm wondering if you could help us, I've tried to do some of this, but if you could help us see and understand, okay, see, where there were changes made between what was in 4321 and what is being recommended right now? Can you note that for us so the board can be aware of that? When you said like, it's almost the same, for example, and then I saw, I think there's one sentence missing in one of them. Can you help us understand, like, is that the only place where there's some language changed? And then, more importantly, why the recommendation from administration now is to modify that slightly from what was in 4321? Does that make sense?
It does. If you recall, that was Mr. Weber that interpreted the request in these amendments for the policy committee. So, I think he did, Rod, did he give you any information on kind of what his thinking was in making those edits and revising the previous language?
I guess, yes, he did. I think that what he, what I understand, and when we went through this, the language is effectively the same in many of the areas. It's just that I think that there were some shalls that we changed to should whenever feasible. I think it's probably the most consistent change that I recall him saying we made. But we can, I'd have to go back and look at the PowerPoint again because to see the actual comparisons. But that's what I remember the conversation being.
Okay, maybe, like, if you want to take a few minutes and then get back to us, that would be helpful. And I just have one more question for now, which is, Dr. Giovanni, could you please share a little bit more about the interpretation services? I'm trying to understand what was on the slide. So, when you say external agencies provide interpretation for non-DPS involvement, flush, could you flush that out a little bit for?
So, I did reach out to the three departments that are listed on the slide. And they were pretty consistent that it is the practice in Durham Public Schools in the event that law enforcement has occasion to come to the school for, with either the judicial warrant or a subpoena or some other FERPA compliant or proper means that they do provide, as indicated in the previous version of 4132, that interpretation to English language, limited English proficiency families. The city utilizes, I think Mr. Friedman did share with me, and in the county, they both utilize a language line as well as, on certain occasions, depending on the circumstances, interpreters. So, they are complying with the policy language from 43, the old 4321 in that they are providing that interpretation.
Oh, thank you. That's great to hear. So, we're talking about the police department and the sheriff's office, which does mean too that that language from 4321 should be fine to put back into the policy along with the other pieces that we're recommending go back in the policy today.
I think I would probably like a little more conversation at the policy committee, just to understand a little more fully. It's an odd language, it's odd language to put in there that, to direct the law enforcement. If you recall, we kind of talked about that. I think maybe some wordsmithing that the board like requires or indicate or mandate, something along those lines, I can't really wordsmith it on the fly here, that when law enforcement is interacting that the superintendent or designee shall make sure, I don't, I don't want to wordsmith it. Yeah, something along those lines, just, so I don't want to say, and, you know, to you that that language would verbatim go right back in. I do think that it can be addressed and added back in in some way. But it is an odd language for the board to attempt to direct to another agency what to do. I want to make sure that it's something that your, that Dr. Lewis's staff can implement. And so that right now, it's just sitting at the law enforcement level versus Dr. Lewis directing his staff that if law enforcement shows up without an interpreter, then you, the things that we would need to do, is that?
Yes, that makes sense. And I think, because this will be coming back to the committee in January, as you had noted, where we'll do a much more comprehensive review. That feels comfortable to me to then reassess at that point and receive recommendations from administration.
I'll make that note.
I see Chair Olmstead and Ms. Byer.
To that point around interpretation, I'm wondering, is there, we also have access to a language line. And so an opportunity, I understand there wants to be more wordsmithing, but that says the superintendent or the school system will direct families to have access to interpretation through DPS. I think it's, personally, I would like to see families have an independent agency be that interpreter versus having and somewhat coming, who's also interviewing and interpreting. I think that could be an intimidating situation to have law enforcement doing that interpretation. And we have access to a language line, so we should use that access to the language line. So, that's one. Oh, sure.
I don't know, I need to think about this. I want us to think about this a little bit more because I, I think that the resources the district has already stretched to support on the educational needs. But I also would be concerned about the liability concerns if a DPS agent or somebody working on behalf of the district got the interpretation wrong and said the wrong thing in a criminal environment or in a civil, a legal environment, I think is more the thing. And then, our stakeholders are on the receiving end of that. So, I would like to know a little bit about the liability and I don't know what that looks like for the district.
Ms. Byer had a comment?
So, I'm appreciative of the work on this and wondering, and knowing that there's still more to fix, but wanting to query the board on the comfort level of actually waiving second reading and improving these aspects of policy this evening. And the only wordsmithing that came to my mind, I do think the interpretation thing is super important for y'all to help us craft in a way that is most student centered and protecting students' rights. However, that can be addressed, I don't think that's through a law enforcement interpreter. I do not think the motives are the same. But I see Chair Olmstead's point about perhaps a language line where it is, it is someone that is not a DPS employee directly. I don't know what other community interpretation services we might contract with or something as well. In the first red line, I'm looking at the strike, track changes version. We saying we're publishing the MOU with the sheriff, can we post it? Like, the, just, does that make more sense to others as well? Publish, that we'd post it on the website, not publish it on the website?
It's the same thing.
Is it publishing? Is it, sorry, I'm an English major.
Me too.
Okay, so you like it the same? You think it's the same?
I also work for a publishing company.
I know, it's true. You are more qualified to make this-
I don't think it matters.
Okay, I like to post things, but that was the, of the red line text, that was what was jumping at me. But if it's not bothering others, I think it's important to try to set this back right as quickly as we can to, because we, we lost it inadvertently in policy transition. So, I look forward to whatever we can do to keep this moving forward.
I want to come back to Ms. Olmstead because she had more comments that she needed to make, and then Ms. Chavez has comments.
Yeah, no, cut some of my comments. I support us trying to get this started. I think, I think my goal honestly would, as we're even talking about this interpretation, is like, I prefer none of this to happen in our school buildings and that schools really become places where kids are just in class and learning. And if law enforcement needs to talk to them, they find them at their homes, is my personal preference. But I think that's a longer conversation that we can go back to the policy committee. The other language that I just was curious about is the whenever feasible. And I wondered if there was anything stronger that we could use there. You know, is it should unless in case of emergent issue, but the whenever feasible feels kind of like, when you want.
I think it's a little better than that, but, but, no, your point is good. I do think that what we were trying to clarify here is that there will be real life situations where it wouldn't be feasible. And if we want to look for some stronger language than whenever feasible, we can certainly do that. Let me ponder that for a second, I'll see if I can give you some words for that in a minute here. But that is, that is what we were trying to do, is to just recognize that there will be situations when that would not be realistically possible.
Understood. I like you pondering some different language there. And I appreciate the policy committee and the robust conversations we had, as well as the community members who have brought this to our attention and have continued doing advocacy work around making sure that we do everything we can to support our students during this time. So, thank you all.
All right, thank you. So, I also support having stronger language and taking out the whenever feasible. I think it doesn't encourage people to try very hard. People read that in different ways. So, I wrote down some, in cases, and I think we discussed this the other day, excepted in case, like, shall, excepted in case, exceptional cases of urgency or something like that. But I know Rod is going to give us the perfect language. And, and then also, I do want to move forward with passing this tonight. And I am generally in favor of all these changes. Look forward to talking more about interpretation in January. I think we need to have a more robust conversation, but I look forward to what administration will bring back around that. And then, we'll, we'll discuss. So, the other area where the language is different, the reference to Plyer, Plyler versus though is taken out. So, slide 13 to 14, there's one sentence that's taken out. So, I do wonder why that sentence was taken out. This review shall be too insured.
Yeah, so I think that when we looked at that language and looked at the current, like, state of the law, that language really does not apply to the decision that's being made here. So, we were just trying to get it more legally accurate in terms of what occurs in that situation. Because Plyler is about the ability to go to school, right? And it, and it, so it just didn't really seem to fit. So, if we were cleaning it up, we were trying to maintain the spirit of what you had in mind here, but to get it a little more legally accurate. That was the reason for that change.
I'm okay with that. I think that's all. Board members, are there any other comments or questions? Ms. Byer?
I was just going to go back to Rod and see if he had some words for the when feasible, because I thought he'd come up with something. Been there twice, right?
And it may be in a third spot too, but-
And could I also add, can you talk a little bit more about when it won't be feasible? Because in my mind, I'm thinking if a law enforcement officer has to report to a school to interact with a student, so you have either superintendent's office, school principal, say the school principal is not there, then an appropriate school administrator. So, when will a law enforcement not interact with any of those individuals before getting to a student?
So, the example that Jason and I discussed, which maybe is an extreme example, but it's, it's an example of why we were trying to have some flexibility in the language is law enforcement is chasing a person. They entered the school, the person enters the school, law enforcement is chasing that person into the school, that under those facts where they are, they see the person go into the school, you may not necessarily want law enforcement to stop and follow these procedures if they feel that there's danger by waiting. And so I think that that's the, again, that may be an extreme example, but that's the example that when Jason and I were talking this through and trying to have some flexibility in the language that we were trying to address. So, I get that whenever feasible is not as strong and should, so I was, and I, right now, I've just got shall, except in cases of an emergency. And I don't know if that's, makes you feel a little bit better. And then maybe if you approve this version, Jason and Dr. Giovanni and I can maybe talk about it some more when it comes back to you in January to tweak it again. But certainly, I'm okay with shall, except in cases of emergency, if that at least makes you feel better tonight about these changes.
I saw Mr. Tab, did I see anyone? I saw Jessica, Ms. Carter Otten.
Thank you very much. In looking at this and reading over it, it seems as though we are a little off between what administration wants and what maybe some board members want. And then again, looking at it, we're really not that far off. And I'm just wondering if, if tonight, we can bring the administration on board with where we are as a board or vice versa? And, because we are in a work session, and that's what a work session is supposed to do. And so I'm wondering if that's feasible. And I'm posing that to administration and to my colleagues on the board. Because I don't want this to get messy.
I, thank you, Mr. Tab. I am on board with where the policy committee's recommendations. If I've given that impression that I am not or am objecting to any of these proposed edits, that is not the case.
Ms. Carter Otten, did I see your hand?
Yes, I just wanted to note something that's bugging me a little bit about the policy that I think we were going to tackle when we bring it back in January. But I'm wondering if there's anything we want to do today around that. But, and it is the fact that this policy is trying to do a lot, and it's including language related to our SROs that are in our schools and other local law enforcement and other law enforcement. And I wonder, like, when we mentioned the MOU, that MOU- And I wonder, like, when we mentioned the MOU, that MOU is with our sheriff's office. Should we specify that here in the policy, just to be very clear? We refer to local law enforcement in another point. And again, we can, we'll work on this more in January to make it very clear who we're talking about at different points, but I think there's a different relationship between SROs and a school, and when SROs go to a school and all the, and the other entities we're talking about. Sorry, I had another thought related to that as well, and it has left my brain. Oh, that some boards, like I think is the case in Chapel Hill-Carboro, have a policy 5120 and a separate SRO policy. That's very basic and just references their MOU, but like, kind of to separate the two, so we could just be thinking about that, so that we don't have a policy that just feels unclear to anybody, so.
Ms. Chavez and then Ms. Rogers?
So I just wanted to, let's see if I can remember all my points. Say yes to the clarifying that the MOU is with the sheriff's office. I think that makes sense. And then... Yes, so we talked about a number of things in the policy committee meeting. One was sort of defining who's included in law enforcement or included in different sections. So I think, I think that's still important, and we should do that in the next iteration. The reason why we discussed passing this tonight is because of the current climate and the urgency around that. And also, I would say because the changes, the things that were taken out were never voted on by the board. So to put them back in, four out of the five, with the interpretation being the one we need to do now more assessment on, I think it makes sense to just move forward with that. But there's more work to be done and more, and for anybody who did not see it, the details of what we will come discuss again in January are in that policy committee update for information only. So it is documented here what we look, what we are going to work on on January 22nd. That meeting is open to the public.
Ms. Carter-Autton, thank you for raising the fact that some districts have a separate 5120 and a SRO policy. I think that that's an interesting idea to explore. I hadn't seen that. I am concerned about, I know you, we're coming back to revisit this policy 5120. I'm concerned about naming the sheriff's office, because we need the superintendent to have the flexibility to enter into an MOU with the law enforcement agency, should the sheriff's office pull out of the current MOU. And that would then be the City of Durham or other, some other law enforcement agency to provide SROs. And if we codify that in policy every time, there needs to be a change, because we did used to have city SROs or city police as SROs. Every time that MOU needed to change, we would have to change the policy. But I would feel differently if it were a separate SRO policy. Right?
Chair Umstead and then Ms. Chavez?
Wondering if we just clarified that the memorandum of understanding is for the school resource officer program, which leaves it a little more open. Or full resource officer program. And I know we also have some off-duty officers, so I don't know how to capture them in that.
That's where I would just, I was going to suggest that we can say something more broad, like any memorandum of understanding with a law enforcement agency will be published on this school system website.
All right.
Like a lawyer.
So I'm hearing interest in taking the amendments that have been brought today, maybe listening to Rod again, give us some language, and then seeing if we can... We can waive a second read to approve it with the, with the work that has been currently done, and then wanting to revisit, you know, once that's done, putting it back into, giving it back to policy committee to find a time to revisit some of these other changes. This is what I'm understanding, wanted to get some clarity on that. I see Ms. Byers.
I was just ready to make a motion if we're ready for one.
Okay.
So I move that we waive second read on policy 5120, the relationship with law enforcement. I think we have to vote that to waive second reading first.
Second. So it's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Chavez, to waive the second read of policy 51... About 5120, and I didn't catch the last part of what you said. All right. Is there any discussion? I did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passes unanimously. Oh, any opposed? Okay, I feel like if everybody says aye, I don't, I got to remember to do that. Okay, any opposed? It passes unanimously.
So I was going to move that we accept the changes, amendments discussed here to policy 5120, the largest of which is replacing the two instances of wherever feasible with except in cases of emergency.
The idea was to delete should and make that shall. So shall, except in cases of emergency, comma.
Change the, change the instances of should to shall.
Correct.
Yep. Leaving the published alone from, by Chair Rogers. And then there was the notation about the memorandum of understanding with law enforcement agencies. Any law enforcement agency. Is that, yep.
So what, what lawyer said is that we would change that sentence that now reads the memorandum of understanding. It would read any memorandum of understanding with a law enforcement agency will be published.
So with those amendments, as discussed here, I move approval of the revised policy 5120.
Second. All right now, it's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Carter-Autton, to approve the changes to amendment 5120, one being, do I need to restate this again, that we would change the should to shall? And the second one was to change the MOU to read any memorandum of understanding.
That's, that's correct, but the shall also includes shall, except in cases of emergency.
Shall and...
Did when feasible, if that phrase.
So should, comma, when feasible, would be replaced with shall, except in cases of emergency, comma.
All right, we have clarity on that? All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Okay. Now we have policy, board policy 5023, et cetera, et cetera, emergency use of naloxone. All right, this is also for information.
Good evening again. If you, I will direct everyone's attention to board docs where a track changes version of the policy, as well as the precis is included. This policy I have included in here, it's kind of a brain dump that Ms. Carter-Autton shared with me, just to lift it up, because the board did express that it was interested in move, the policy committee indicated that it was interested in getting this policy adopted as soon as possible as well. I do want to make it clear that the work, there is naloxone in our schools currently that our staff has access to, as well as SROs do have it. So this policy is simply an attempt to kind of codify and provide some additional guardrails and guidance around the use of naloxone. But not adopting it will not prevent access to this lifesaving drug from, for our students, our staff in our schools. But with that indicated, if you, one of the things that the policy committee in the draft wanted to remove, to the extent funding, staff, and training are available, and the superintendent was simply designated and authorized to obtain the supply needed of naloxone. Where there is additional conversation from the policy committee... Where there was additional, there's going to be several areas, but the first one that the policy committee did share is that they wanted some discussion and input from the full board regarding how many school employees at any building site should be required to have that training. The original draft of the policy from NCSBA indicates one or more. The policy committee indicated that they were interested in either two or three. So once I conclude, that would be one area that we would like some input from the full board and some additional discussion. One of the other, in another district where, and this wasn't discussed in the policy committee, but wanted to lift it up for conversation, is that where there is no one trained, that anyone who believes that there is a student or a staff member suffering from an opioid overdose, which could be assisted with the administration of naloxone, would be authorized to use it for that purpose where they determine that to be in good faith. Do want Mr. Malone to provide the board with feedback on any potential immunity considerations that the board needs to be made aware of as it makes any decision on including that language or deleting that language. And just to be clear, this language is, was not before the policy committee, but is being lifted up to the full board, given the desire for expediency in adopting this policy. The other thing that is included in the draft that you have in board docs is some additional directions for staff, where school leaders would be encouraged to get as many people trained, including coaches, guidance counselors, custodians, teachers, and any other interested staff that may be in proximity to respond to a suspected opioid overdose. So that was some language that was provided in the version that Ms. Carter-Autton shared with me over one of the snow days, I believe. So next is a form, which obviously would not be included, but just wanted to give it the board, it wouldn't be included in policy, but would be something that would be issued by the superintendent. But just wanted some additional thought and feedback from the board as community representatives, if there was any, on what that form, if that form is acceptable to the board. And the last addition that is included is that this policy does not create a private right of action against the board or school district employees. Just trying to have some conversation again around what the expectation is. I think it was shared with the policy committee, well, I know it was, that the district cannot force any employee to administer medications to students. And so just for those that choose not to, perhaps, we just want to make sure that they are not, that that's not going to potentially create any type of private right of action. So happy to entertain any questions? And I think Mr. Malone is prepared also to provide some additional feedback on the language and what the impact of, under the North Carolina Good Samaritan statute is for the use of naloxone.
All right, there were several points that were brought up for the board to consider. Maybe we shouldn't, we can take them one at a time. One was about the change of, well, the number of designees on Part B, how many people should be trained, be, who would say how many, how many people in the building need to be trained, what the number would be, one or two or three? And then there's also lifting up what they were saying about, let me see. Let's start there. So is there any, any suggestions on that language they're asking the board? My personal opinion is that I don't feel that any, if with something that's serious, it's always good to have more than one person in a building that's trained to do it, because you never know if someone's going to be absent. So I err on the caution of having at least two to three people trained. I would say three. If, so I'm in favor of having more than one person being trained for each building. And then I'm confused a little bit about the language that Ms. Carter-Autton brought about more training. So this would be like in policy, are we saying that we would have a, we want to see that this, that we have this many people, the policy would have this many people trained, but then we would also be having additional training, so that other people would be aware of it? Like, are we extending that training to other, others in the building? That's what I'm trying to understand, is that where that goes, or was this something in addition to the policy? So I saw Ms. Carter-Autton, did I see anyone else? Oh, okay. And Ms. Rogers?
Do I have to speak on that part of the policy first? You're doing a great job of facilitating. I will follow your guide. Okay. I agree that more people trained in a building is better. We struggled in policy committee because we have schools that are very different sizes. So while we do have schools that only have 200 something students in them with, I don't know how many staff they would have. Could anybody, Dr. King, maybe tell me how many staff, like a small school, might have?
Well, obviously it would depend on grade span. So I'd say a small elementary school might have 30 staff. But a small high school might probably have 150.
Right, okay, so our smallest, so the fewest staff that would be in a building in DPS might be around 30. That's what I'm looking for, a range, because I'm just trying to think of like a comprehensive high school has almost 2,000 students. They're going to have plenty of staff and a lot of students who might need attention, whereas our smaller schools have fewer students that might need the support in this situation, but also might have fewer staff to pull from. So that's what we were...
I think that the range would be, I would say, you probably would range from a small elementary school having somewhere around 30 to 35 staff, to a large comprehensive high school having somewhere between 200, 250 staff.
Thank you, that's helpful. So that was what we were trying to navigate, but I do err on the side of more. We could put a range, we could put a at minimum, but we would like to see more. I just want to make sure that where we can, I also assume that trainings might happen in groups, but where we can, we ensure that enough people are trained on the, you know, on that campus as possible, so that if an emergency arises, somebody's there who feels competent administering this medication that's so important. So that's my feedback on that point.
I think... I think my question is... My question is for my colleagues around consensus on a thing, but I think the question is, like, we keep saying buildings, the policy says principal, but there are lots of buildings that are open to the public. Public comes to Fuller, public goes to the MRC, the public goes to Bacon Street, and there may be a need to administer to... Sorry, we're using that. The la, naloxone? Naloxone language? To a guest in one of our buildings? And so would this policy speak to those other buildings having same body to administer naloxone?
So just to, for clarity, just to be clear, it's not the actual answer, but I would just note for the, for the record, all of our buildings have principals. There is, there is a principal of this building. So just want to share that. So there is someone designated in every one of our buildings as the principal and who could provide that. and who could provide that, that level of support.
I think I agree with Dr. King, it does principle, but I think we can maybe tweak the language from school. I think that that's where there's some confusion, is this does say school. So I need my colleagues to agree to that part, but I, I'm, as I'm thinking about the general public health of the Durham community, I'm not as concerned about elementary school kids as I am to guests that show up to MRC, and not just MRC, the, what's the name, Mini Fort Brown Staff Development Center where community ed is. When they show, I expect that if somebody shows up and is having, demonstrating signs of an overdose, that staff at a school performance or an athletic event would perform same procedures for adults. And so I just want to make sure that we are covering our community in our building spaces in this way. And I want to make sure my colleagues are okay with that.
I would have a question about that. So in, thanks for the explanation about, you know, every building having a principal. I was thinking about the population of a small school still wanting to have a minimum of two people that were, that was trained. In the case of adding all of our extra buildings, is it still feasible to expect two people? I think so. I think we have more than two people that are in our buildings at any given time. I think I would err on the caution of never having just one person trained. So at least minimum two would be, what, you know, would be my preference for, for anything of that nature. And then, you know, in case one is not available, there's always someone else who's trained. I also think with policies like this, I'm thinking about this, you know, overall as we're, you know, this new policies and other policies, we're making changes, there's always going to be emergency situations or situations that are outside of what is, you know, there's always, you know, the possibility of something that can happen outside of what is written in a policy. Oh, my God, the two trained people aren't there, now what do we do in an emergency situation? That's, you know, I don't think we can write all of those things into policy, but we should have just the standard, just the, the, the main expectation of, of what we would, you know, what we can do. And then when things happen outside of that, those would be case by case things that we would need to address. But at least it's defined in policy that this is how it was supposed to happen. So I would err on the caution of two. And then, you know, if somebody's not trained in the building, I don't think we necessarily have to articulate all of the different scenarios into a policy. We would have to trust that, you know, that's our humanity that would need to respond in an emergency situation. Ms. Carter-Otten?
I just wanted to clarify that the policy specifies that we're talking about schools here.
At the beginning of the policy, it says, it's part of the commitment to providing a healthy and safe environment for students, employees, and visitors. So are we just, and then, I mean, so are we only doing this for students at schools? Or are we doing it for employees and visitors? So maybe we should remove the employees and visitors part.
No. I don't disagree with anything that you were saying necessarily. I'm just trying to explain that I see what you're saying. Yes, it extends beyond students, but it is, as currently written, and we could change that, it's currently written about schools, not about other buildings outside of school. So the visitor could be in the school, but we're not, this policy right now, and we could change it, does not extend to other buildings that are not schools.
Yeah, that would be the ask, that was my ask.
Oh, if we want to extend it?
Yes, because I, and I think about the number of people at that site. So that was one of the things that I was weighing in, like the number of people at Bacon Street, the number of people at different locations, number of people at the MRC during the day, when there's not an event. Not MRC, what's the name of the building? Staff Development Center. Yes, so that's what I was thinking. And I don't know how many people are there, but I would like us to consider extending it, so it's all inclusive.
Byer? I love the addition of school or site, or school or building, whatever, like any work site, right? I think that's a powerful addition. I think we should have at least three people trained. I know it's going to be a hassle, but it's a seven-minute video online mostly. It's, the, the Health Department has it on the website, I'm pretty sure. So three would be what I would say in that. What else are we talking about? I think Ms. Carter-Otten had some suggestions. I still was looking to see and, and if we could take the word "only" out of that Part B, that sentence number two or three, wherever it is, to take only trained employees are authorized, and you were just to say trained employees are authorized. Mr. Malone, did you want to tell us about the, the Good Samaritan state law and our potential liability? If someone untrained gives naloxone, is, what risk is that putting the board or future boards under?
So I think that in your policy, you want to establish who is authorized. So from a liability perspective, right, this is how we view this kind of a policy, right? You're, you want to, you want your policy to, in my mind, to say that only trained employees are authorized. Those are the people that you are authorizing to do it. It doesn't prevent someone else from doing it, it's just saying that those are the people that the board is authorizing to provide the medication. And, you know, as the lawyer, that would certainly be our preference, is that, that's how the policy reads. Because if you otherwise are authorizing untrained people to provide it, and they provide it incorrectly, then the board could have liability, because in your policy, you authorized untrained people to provide it. So that's why, from a policy drafting perspective, in an emergency, people are going to do what they're going to do, right? I mean, that's going to happen, but just from a, from a, as you draft a policy, it would be our recommendation that the policy limit the people who can provide it to those who are trained.
Ms. Carter-Otten?
Thank you for keeping an eye on us, Rod. I, I like the idea of removing the word "only," though, and then removing the, the sentence after that that was proposed. To me, that feels more clear, the however, other individuals who are not trained. So we take that out, and then we just say trained employees are authorized. So that, to me, is, that's who we're authorizing, is the trained employees. We're not going to say anything about people who are not trained, because if they want to step in and help, that's up to them, but we're not going to explicitly say "only," and we're not going to explicitly say this language about other individuals who are not trained. Does that feel okay to you, or would it be all right with you?
Yeah, if the question is the removing the word "only," but keeping the trained part, I can live with that, and I would love to delete the next sentence.
So that, that'd be my preference. I'm curious to know what others think about that. And then I do have one more recommendation for this policy that I would like to voice after that.
But can I speak to why I would remove the second sentence? I would remove the second sentence primarily because it's, that concept is already covered in your policy in Section C at the, the very first sentence, or really most of Section C, addresses others administering it. So I don't think you need the, the however sentence. So that would be my primary reason for deleting that sentence, is that I think, you have to go way to the very end.
Because I also didn't think that form belongs in policy. You were just putting it there for an example, right?
Yes, correct, just to have the conversation, because of the board's sense of urgency around getting this moved forward. So wanted to have the conversation, because ultimately it is the board's decision, right, like policy language. So just wanted to be transparent. And that will come out, and I, I'm actually fine. I think the more that I'm having the conversation, I think I would like to just delete the request on the form and then allow that to come back at the policy committee, once this policy, once we have some more final language from the board on the actual policy. Mr. Malone is sharing that if it's the board's desire, we could also discuss this in policy committee, that it become a regulation as well, so that there's some additional detailed guidance for the school community as well, outside of just a form. So that's an option as well. But at this time, I think just listening to kind of the conversation, it may be premature for us to address that and just go ahead and consider just the actual policy language, and then allow us to come back with, after some additional consideration, either a regulation or a procedure or a form that's issued from the superintendent.
All right, I see your hand, Ms. Carter-Otten. Are we ready to like clarify some language? And then do I hear that we might want to entertain a motion to approve this without discussing the, without discussing the form at this time, but just looking at the language of the policy? Does that mean that we're going to, again, well, I'm asking, is the board asking again to waive a second read? And to go ahead and, and to talk about, to see if we agree on the language and approve the language where it is current, where the, the changes that we're talking about right now? I saw Ms. Carter-Otten's hand, I see Ms. Chavez, did you? Did I interrupt another thought?
I can go, I could go either way. I would, could be curious to hear what other board members think about whether we waive a second read or not. But I just wanted to finish with my other recommendations for this, I suppose, which is to remove the form, but also that, kind of the more procedural language around use of naloxone that precedes the form, that feels like something that should be in procedure as well. Maybe that was the intent too, but starting with Roman numeral one, use of naloxone, and then it kind of gives instructions, which will be in the training. So I think that's more appropriate for procedures. And then also, more importantly, maybe, earlier in the policy, under A, availability of naloxone, I'd really like to strengthen that language further. So currently it says the superintendent or designee is authorized to obtain. So that's nice, if we authorize him to obtain a supply of naloxone. But I would like to change that is required to obtain an adequate supply of naloxone, clearly indicating that that's the expectation of the board. There's already language, two paragraphs down, saying nothing in this policy should be construed to require the presence of, that I think provides us with the space if a school runs out of a supply and something happens and it's not there. I think this is protected. I did review this with our attorney that, who is supporting the policy committee, but curious to hear others' thoughts on this, and Rod's.
Rod, did you want to respond?
No, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with those proposed changes, they sound good to me.
Ms. Chavez?
I just want to run through my thoughts. I would like to change this same wording to required, and we discussed that in the policy committee, I favor that. I think designating three individuals, I'd favor that. And then I agree with everything we talked about, as far as saying, taking out only before trained employees and taking out the sentence afterwards. And, yeah, any other changes noted here? Taking out numeral, Roman numeral one, use of naloxone through the form, taking that out. I'm happy for it to come back as a procedure, regulation, but I don't think, I don't know if it needs to. And I would love for us to waive second reading and pass this tonight, because we have a long list of policies that we are working through, and I don't know how we are going to get through all them by June. So if we're okay with the language, I mean, if we need more time, obviously, we take it. But if the board sort of agrees, then I'd love to move forward with passing this policy this evening.
Excuse me, I just want to be crystal clear, since it is the superintendent that's going to be, or designee is required to do that. Crystal clear on the language, particularly on those numbers of people. When we say train three people, are we including the school nurse and/or SRO at our secondary schools who are also trained? Are we include them in that number?
This came up in policy committee. Our policies can only require district staff. And so some of the nurses work for the county, the SROs work for the sheriff, so it would be district staff. It would be three in addition to.
Would it just be helpful to say three district staff? Three district staff? Understanding that some of our nurses are county employees.
But some of them are DPS.
Right.
I think the other thought, though, was nurses aren't on campus all the time, as many of them share schools, so having three in addition to would be helpful.
So clearly spelling that three in addition to, who nurse?
Nope, three DPS staff. They're not DPS, they don't work for you, they don't work for you.
But I thought I heard Chair Armstead mention in addition to the, so I guess that's the same thing.
In addition to, yeah, I guess if it's a, if the nurse is trained, that's great.
But it could be a county employee, right?
Be a county employee, could be a DPS employee. But if that nurse is not there on Wednesday, then there should still be three people that are trained.
Okay, I'm clear on that. The next one is the adequate supply. How do we define adequate supply?
Well, I'm looking, the other thing we talked about in policy committee was making sure the language was consistent with the EPI-PEN policy, which we also have, which is 5024. And the language, rather than the superintendent is required, Ms. Carter-Otten, is the superintendent shall ensure. And then here it says that at least two emergency bloody, bloody auto injector devices are available. Shall ensure that at least two. I don't know if that is language that might be helpful in this policy, something similar. And then you replenish, right, if it's ever used, but I, I wondered if it was working with EPI-PEN or if that's what our staff have been trained on, whether we want to be consistent with the, those, that wording. Shall ensure, the superintendent shall ensure, and then it's at least two devices, something like that? I'm looking at Mr. Malone, I'm looking at you, Dr. Lewis, I'm looking at board members, I don't know. I'm just, that was the other thing that we were trying to kind of keep consistent, because we're potentially training similar staff to do these medical things.
Consistency, consistency in language is always appreciated.
All right. I was going to see if we had a show of hands about whether or not we want to waive a second read. Okay, a comment on the second read, okay?
I have a question, because it sounds like nobody wants to extend it past schools, except me and Natalie. I'm sorry, me and Ms. Byer, to include all of our buildings.
No, no, I, I was, I got a lot of hot and head nods on.
Okay, so we do have, well, when Ms. Chavez was reading out the list of things to approve, to push forward in passing on a first read, that wasn't in the list, that's why I asked.
The first thing I wanted to see is if we have consensus on waiving a second read. So I wanted to see by show of hands, do we want to waive a second read and try to to pass this tonight? Or do we want to go ahead and move forward and bring it back for a second read? So show of hands, so I like to go, you know, five means I feel strongly about that, four, not so much. If we got one, if we have more than, well, if we have at least, you know, if we have any twos or threes, then that means that we don't have consensus. So five means I feel strongly that I do want to waive, or no, can we just show of hands? I'm just trying to see if we're. So no one feels strongly that we should waive it tonight? So I think that we can bring it back for a second read. Is that, does that feel good? Right? All right, you had a comment on second read?
Yeah, I think since we had so many changes that we proposed tonight, bringing it back on a second read and adding it to our consent agenda for, we're going to a work session. In my mind, we were going to another large board meeting, adding to the consent agenda for the work session in January. We can pull it if we need to pull it from that work session, but I think there's so much language change, it'd be good for us to have our eyes on it again before it goes, before it's approved. us to have our eyes on it again before it goes, before it's approved. It was asked if it need to go to Policy Committee. I think we're all in consensus here, so bringing that language back to us feels great.
Ms. Chavez?
I wanted to add one more thing about the staff being trained, which is that they should be full-time staff. And I think we could throw that in there as well, so it's not someone who's only there, you know, half the time or something like that.
If other people agree.
I was actually thinking that when you asked that question, whether we wanted to add in full-time staff, when you mentioned that people don't, so if the board agrees, we can certainly add that language in.
Is it the full-time status, or is it that they're assigned to that site on a full-time basis, or both? You know what I mean? That's what you were, yeah.
Do I have some concerns? Because I think some aftercare folks need to be able to access this, and that sometimes they're not full-time. Are there any other instances where folks might not be full-time?
I think that just making sure that we have at least the three trained full-time would be preferred, but the idea is that if one person is not available, somebody else is. And so, not that all three have to be there all the time, but just making sure that we have the best chance that we have that someone will be in the building at all times that can...
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think I'm concerned, I'm concerned about that reducing the ability to get three folks. And in some instances.
Sometimes where full-time staff might not be, might be something that's after school, or where they're not a full-time person, but having somebody that would be there during that time. Ms. Carter Otten?
I guess I'm not, I don't feel, I hear what Chavez is saying. I would, of course, like them to be there more, but I also would like to, I think that our principals, if we leave it up to them to select appropriate people in their school, they will make a decision that's in the best interest of their students. So I think in this case, I'm okay trusting the principals to select the people that they think are going to be there often enough and in the right places.
All right, Ms. Byer, and I just want to be mindful of the time. We have our, we still have our strategic planning priority to discuss.
My last comment, I promise. Some of us had the chance to talk with some parents that are advocating on better food allergy policies, and went back to the epinephrine policy, pointed out to us that often there is confusion amongst our staff about whether it should be locked or unlocked, and especially the EPI-PENS that parents send from home are often locked, and that quick access is critical with that, and I imagine this medication. So I think as we look at these, looking at that language on both of those to tighten up, that that needs to be, people need to know where it is, but it needs to be unlocked storage. And we need to, I thought it was really good feedback that I had not heard before from our staff, that there is inconsistency in that storage, so.
I think that's something we can take back to the Policy Committee, similar to the school maps that lay out exactly where the fire extinguishers are, extinguishers are. I think we should probably put that on those maps as well. And I do want to just make sure we get clear directives from the board. I know there were some conversations about the number of staff or school number of students. And so when we think about three people being trained for a Lakewood Middle with 327 students versus three people trained for Jordan High School, 2,139 students, is it, do you want us to really kind of just think about that in regard to the number of people trained, have more conversations there? Or just stick to the three?
It says three or more. Like, and then it has another sentence that says, "Other folks, we encourage other," what does it say?
Got more in there?
Yeah, if you keep, yeah.
All right. Anything else that's very, very pressing, since this will be coming back for a second read? All right, Ms. Carter Otten?
Okay. Dr. Giovanni, the other thing that we had discussed in committee that I don't see here was that I know Wake County has in their policy that the principal should collaborate with the appropriate school personnel to create an emergency action plan for the use of naloxone. I like that because it tasks the principal with planning for all these things we're talking about. And like assessing, how many people do I need to be trained on my campus? Where's it going to be stored? How do we make sure? So if we make sure that that's in policy, so that's just my preference, it's like language like that be included in the policy. So then it clearly states that, and there's room for this other building.
Yeah, my recollection, which can be flawed, maybe inhuman, was that I thought I had indicated that I would like to be able to talk with principals or maybe take that to spec. I thought that that's what, or maybe I just thought it in my head and didn't share it with y'all. But that is my concern, this kind of directing things like that for principals that may not be trained in creating these types of plans. I would like the opportunity to, once, I mean, the policy, bring it back on consent, but then share with principals, like, what does this look like? Like, I see what Wake's doing, but I don't want to set our principals up for failure, when I don't know kind of what their bandwidth are and their capacity is to create these plans. And I would like to consult with Dr. Maddox Perry as well, you know, since social workers and nurses fall under her, just what does that look like? So I'm happy to, I mean, if the board wants that language in there, but it makes me very uncomfortable not having the input from the experts that do this work.
Okay, that makes sense. I don't remember you saying that, but that makes sense now that I've heard it. But it does feel like there needs to be a point person at each school, so whatever, if something could come back in what we receive that indicates that there is a person at the school that's going to be, whether it be the principal or somebody else, be in charge of the planning, so.
All right, I love that pause. So are we ready? This is going to come back for a second reading on the consent agenda at the work session in January. That's what I'm hearing? Thumbs up? So we do need to vote. Okay, head motion?
I move that we approve for first read policy 5023 slash 6128 slash 7268, emergency use of naloxone. Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Chavez, seconded by Ms. Byer, to approve the first read of board policy 5320, 6128, 7268, emergency use of naloxone. All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any oppose? All right, it passes six, six oh. Next on our agenda, we are going to our strategic plan priority one report and update. This has been allotted 45 minutes. And, thank you. I see everybody moving.
Good evening, board members. We are excited tonight to bring this strategic plan reporting and update item to the board. We're particularly excited because the presentation tonight will introduce to the board and the larger community a shift in our work that we believe will strengthen our work and reinforce the notion of the strategic plan and the board-approved strategies therein as our organizational north star. Next slide. Oh, next slide. So board members, historically, our reports regarding or around the strategic plan have been organized by priorities and goals, but in practice, they often read like a long list of activities that we were engaging in as district staff. Across departments, we weren't always using the same lens to think about our work in terms of the strategic plan. And so sometimes those reports seemed inconsistent, and it was hard to see which strategies were actually moving along and moving outcomes. From a continuous improvement standpoint, that represents a particular problem, because we recognize that activities don't equal impact, and we have to be able to see execution, understand implementation levels and results, not just how busy everyone is, because we certainly are all busy all of the time. But we want to shift to a focus that really is about the results that our work is impacting, is providing. Next slide. So tonight, I'm going to start with talking with you a little bit about the process, and then Ms. Sidbury, our Assistant Superintendent for Continuous Improvement and School Support, is going to take over and move into some of the data that we've seen so far this year in our work. And you will see then, hopefully, how all of this connects together. The shift you see here is intended to do three very important things. Number one, we'll clarify for each strategic priority, particularly, we'll talk about one tonight, the ownership of the strategies that are identified in the strategic plan, so that there's no confusion about who the primary accountable person is in our district. It will also let us see strategy-level progress and strategy-level gaps as it relates to the work that we're doing, rather than kind of focusing on isolated and disconnected projects that might be going on across the district. And then it really responds to, directly to Cognia's feedback about coherence, monitoring, and evidence of impact. And that particularly is important, as I would remind you all, we are in the throes of our preparation for our Cognia visit, our Cognia reaccreditation visit, which is currently scheduled for next year. So this, this shift, we think, will put us in a position to operate in a way that high-performing systems operate. A small number of clear strategies, each with an owner, a level of implementation or understanding of that implementation, evidence of that impact over time. At this time, it's my pleasure to turn the mic over to Ms. Chanelle Sidbury, again, our Assistant Superintendent for Continuous Improvement and School Support, who will walk you through what we will report going forward and the remainder of our presentation tonight.
Thank you, Dr. King. Good evening, board, Chair Omsdod, board, and administration. I'm going to talk to you about what we will be reporting moving forward. Next slide, please. So going forward, every update will look and feel the same. You're not going to be relearning the format each time. I have the pleasure of walking you through that tonight, but all of the subsequent updates will be in this same format. First, we will look at strategy execution. Are we actually doing the things that we said we would do in the strategic plan, and are we doing so consistently? Second, we will report about the results. What's happening with student learning, opportunity gaps, and are there conditions at every school to strategically improve? This aligns to continuous improvement research, where we monitor both fidelity and implementation, as well as impact of outcomes. And you do it on a predictable cycle, such as beginning of year, middle year, and end of year, versus on one-off presentations. One, next slide, please. So here's a look of every slide that you will see moving forward. We want to keep it simple and usable for the public. Each strategy will be reported through the same four questions. Number one, what are we doing? Number two, is it working? Number three, where do we need to improve? And what will we do next to improve? This is our way of operationalizing continuous improvement. We're naming the practice, naming our bright spots, naming the gaps, and then being explicit about what we will do next, not at the school or classroom level, but at the system level. And we will connect where we need to improve in our reporting and our metrics of success. Next slide, please. This slide is my favorite slide. It has a lot of words, but for the public, this is a visual of the continuous improvement cycle. It is the backbone of how we are coaching our district departments, also coaching our district leaders, and how we are now structuring our strategic plan update to the board. We start by, number one, collecting data and analyzing performance. We are looking at student outcomes, demographics, equity, school environment, implementation fidelity, and the conditions for continuous improvement. Then we will ask, what is our current reality? And that is an honest answer. What is the gap between what we aspire to do and where we are currently? From there, we will choose a focused problem to solve. We design a plan, implement it, and then come up with monitoring. We want to know, did it work? And if it's not working, how will we adjust for our schools? We began continuous improvement cycles at our schools that are designated as low-performing by the state, as well as those that have recently gotten off of low-performing status. So that was 24 schools where we had a structure called impact meetings. Impact meetings serves as the vehicle to assess not just what schools are doing, but the systems and structures that help us implement our strategies to the strategic plan. So what you will see tonight is every slide will be basically a snapshot of where we are in this cycle, and it is tailored to our highest-need schools, which is start those 24 schools that are either low-performing by the state or recently leaving off of low-performing. Next slide, please. So this lovely slide is the slide that allows us to verify impact. Going to take you through each phase, and then I will be giving you an update on each of our strategic plan strategies based on implementation levels. So we are not reporting on percentages per se. We're looking at, do we see these strategies consistently happening across our schools? So level one is not yet started, so that's pretty clear. Level two is planning and exploring. We, in this case, that means we have a plan, we have some artifacts, but there is no visible change at the classroom level, and that it is not a part of our daily practice yet. Level three is initial implementation. In this case, the work is in action, we see it in action, but it is inconsistent across all schools. In some cases, we may have been working on strategies for a number of years, and yet we are at initial implementation because that strategy is not being implemented consistently across all of our schools. Level four is full routine implementation. That means it's a part of how we do business. It doesn't matter if I am gone, or a department chair leaves, or principal is turned over, is a part of the systems and standard operating procedures for Durham Public Schools. And then level five is sustained and impactful, the practice is embedded, and student outcomes are improving as a result of this work. And while I'm reporting throughout this presentation, you will hear me using these phrases, and you will also hear me say, "Some schools," but that, "Some schools are doing X," and that means that we do see initial implementation, but still not consistently across our schools. You may hear me say, "Many schools," which means we're probably at an implementation level of three or four, but again, not consistently across our schools, but a large subset of our schools are doing this work. And then "some schools" just means, quite frankly, we're still striving for excellence there. Expectations and implementation is inconsistent. If I say something is universal and I see it consistently across all schools, then I will just say "all schools" explicitly, and I will back that up with data and implementation. And keep in mind, again, our first impact meetings were only with our highest-need schools, so it's only 24 schools. I'm reporting on the trends across those schools. I will return at MOI, we'll have a comprehensive look at all of our schools and where they are, we're implementing these strategies, and come back with a mid-of-year course correction and support plans for our schools, which will address our district needs, which will support all schools. Next slide, please. So our first slide here, I have the strategy at the top, directly from the strategic plan that was adopted by the Board of Education. So curriculum, shout-outs to our two EDs in curriculum and instruction. This is not an assessment of the department, but it's an assessment of this strategy consistently happening in our schools. So for curriculum, we are at a level-three implementation. You will see here on the slide that teachers have resources. Many schools have built daily help time or when, what I need, intervention blocks, and we see tier-one and tier-two core curriculum that the board has graciously adopted. We do see those in schools. What is working is that early literacy in K2 is getting stronger. We're seeing better alignment to North Carolina Standard Course of Study in several schools, as evidenced by PLC structures and feedback loops. Where we need to improve, we have a need to improve our depth of knowledge, our depth of knowledge in daily instruction. Some places, the cognitive demand is not aligned to what the standards in the state say, and therefore, the experiences and activities are not aligned to what students would experience on the end-of-grade and intercourse test. So our next steps and that are concrete, aligned to best practice are, our CNI will begin to share examples of rigorous tasks, so that teachers at the PLC level can get a good sense of what on-grade level looks like. Our assessment team will standardize templates for data analysis in partnership with PLCs, and our IOT or Instructional Leadership Team and PLCs will use student work protocols to adjust instruction on a progress monitoring level. This is a classic continuous improvement cycle. We want to tighten the core and not just do more interventions and buy more resources. Next slide, please. This next slide is around... This next slide is around opportunity gaps. Um, opportunity gaps is rated uh our is our lowest rated a strategy in Priority One. It is at a level-two planning and exploring. Um, we do have promising practices, high-impact tutoring, acceleration, opportunity, and summer bridges. Um, but these are not systematized. They're really left up to each school to make those decisions. We used to have ESTR funds where we had lots of tutoring and lots of acceleration and resources. Um, and so we just need to think about how this looks in terms of a district priority and how we uplift these opportunities for all schools. Our teams and our leaderships are looking at student groups so that they know trends, but our monitoring for Black, Hispanic, ELEC, and other student groups isn't yet as tight as it need to be. Um, we do not consistently report out or share data internally that is listed this way by student group. Um, and so we need to tighten up those practices. So if you're asking, um, how many schools need to improve in this area? I would say that we need to first look within ourselves as Durham Public Schools District Office. Um, we as a district needs to strengthen our acceleration systems and student group monitoring if our schools are going to have a strong impact. So our next steps here are the CNI team and MTS team will be building clearer guidance for acceleration so that schools have a roadmap to that. Our data dashboards need to be updated so that they show visuals for our student groups and not just overall averages. And our instructional leadership team will begin to embed student group trackers into their cycles so that they can see school by school who is accelerating and who is not. Next slide, please. Early childhood is our next department. Shout out to Karen and her team um and Dr. Uh Pittman. In early childhood education, we are at a level-three initial implementation. Um, and I think that rating comes from, we have both two things here, curriculum as well as seats. Uh, we are building our implementation. I would say we're at a level-two for our curriculum, and we are at a level-four in terms of building our pre-K seats. Overall, our rating is a three. So we have s- strong pre-K um environments with SEL um routines. Um, our pre-K teachers are using Teaching Strategies Goal as well as a early literacy SEL uh curriculum. Uh, we know that our DPS pre-K students transition more smoothly to kindergarten. Um, but at the same time, our M-class data will show uh a little bit later on that there is a drop in our kindergarten bu- beginning-of-year proficiency, which tells us we have some work to do in terms of aligning our pre-K to K transitions in terms of our expectations, um, the standards, activities, as well as SEL and behavior supports. So our next steps here are that our early childhood team and K-2 teams will work on alignment guides so that standards, routines, and expectations connect. Our Student Support Services Team will be working on expanding SEL behavior supports in our early grades so that our students transition behaviorally in those settings more seamlessly. And we're going to be tightening our attendance coding processes because chronic absenteeism begins at pre-K and kinder, and we want to make sure that we have tight processes to align those. Right now, a panorama success platform uh notes that sixty-one percent of pre-K students are chronically absent, and those translate over to K-2, so we need to have strong monitoring systems in that case. Next slide, please. Career and colleges uh college readiness is next. So shout out to Darian um NCTE as well as Laura Perry and um our Advanced Academic Department. We are not reporting on those departments. I will remind you just this particular strategy. And so for college and career readiness, we are at an initial implementation as well. Uh, we've made strong moves. Our PLCs, they have good structures in place. They're using pacing calendars, and we have consistent district-provided funded ACT support for all of our high school eleventh graders who take that assessment. Um, and we are offering more courses at middle school as well as increasing our CTE pathways at schools. Uh, however, you'll see uh in a bit, our data uh shows us that we're making gains in Math I and Biology, and we have solid ACT supports, but interventions are inconsistent in our high schools, and our assignments don't always build the level of rigor. You'll see that show up in our Math III data. Um, it's not always aligned to that college-level expectations of demand. So uh you will see that Math III is a red flag for us as a district right now across almost every student group. So that lets me know that this is a system-level rigor issue and not a student issue or a school issue. Uh, next steps include uh deepening our support for Math III and English II. Course le- level data uh should be analyzed at the advanced level, and we're going to be integrating SEL and academic supports so that high school uh can integrate SEL into their core curriculum courses as as opposed to looking for SEL to come from a separate uh period of the day or time of the day. Next slide, please. So this slide is around personalized experiential um experiential learning. Um, overall, here we are three initial implementation. Again, we have a lot of pilots. We're doing all the things, project-based learning, blended tools, and um early performance task. We are, our students are engaged. Um, we are, our teachers are experimenting, and we're using technol- technology as that primary vehicle vehicle to personalize our instruction. Where we need to grow, we need some design quality. Um, we do have several things and projects in place that we're piloting, but we need to have a strong opportunity to align what we're doing uh in terms of experiential learning to actually standards align ex- experiential learning. So we want it to be fun and engaging, but we also want it to be rigorous and aligned. Um, and so our next steps are, we're going to be providing that bank of exemplars for tasks. We're going to deepen our depth of knowledge in terms of our professional learning, making sure we know how to get deep uh in our curriculum, and we're going to make regular reflection routines a part of how students process and show their thinking. We want students to be totally accountable for their work and on these personalized paths as well. Next slide. So since I have gone through quite a few of these, I wanted to give you a snapshot of where we are. This slide ref- reflects the first five strategies in Priority One in one place using the rating scale that we talked through. And the story here is honestly, we we have very strong foundations. Um, most of our strategies at our level-three, but we are not yet at the level of consistency across our schools to have the impact that we're aiming for. Um, and so the opportunities that, the opportunity gaps and equity work that you'll see later is really the areas that is impacting this work. Um, so that's where we need to dig deeper and be more disciplined if we want to really hit our 2028 targets. Um, so this is a visual of um our next steps to think about the areas where we need to strengthen. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide is around the strategy with regard to uh um multi-tiered Systems of Support or MTSS. So shout out to Dr. Matt Experian and the Student Support Services Team. They have been working, we have been working as a district on this for a number of years. Um, again, this is going to be rated at a three initial implementation. We have MTSS teams, we have MTS facilitators, we have SEL curriculums, we have intervention blocks, we have programs. You name it, the board has provided it for us. Um, in this context, you'll see PM, I'm referring to progress monitoring, um, and that is how we track whether or not our students are on track, academic, um, behavior, SEL. We want to make sure that we're not just providing interventions, but that we have evid- evidence of the interventions working. And so where we're not yet consistent with this is we do not have standard progress monitoring uh across our schools. Um, our tier-one instructional as adjustments are not seamless. When we get data, we don't all immediately respond to the data and provide supports for students who are struggling. And our layered supports for our behavior needs are ad hoc. Every school has a different way of approaching that work. So in our spring update, uh when we have MOI data, a more comprehensive data report that includes all our schools, you will see that I will bring what is our discipline trends, what are our behavior trends alongside of MTSS implementation. So um, we want to make sure that uh interventions and referrals are tied to intervention plans uh in the very nice uh panorama success platform that you have provided for us. Um, but we are not yet consistently using that across our schools, so we want to beef that up. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide is around exceptional children. Shout out to Dr. Bell and her team. This is not an assessment of the EC program, just this one strategy. And this strategy says, provide teachers and students with the support necessary to increase the number of time, the the percentage of time where students and disabilities are included in core and general education classes. You will find that this is our only strategy that is rated at a four. And quite frankly, we put a a practice in place so that um students are not being pulled out of core instructional classes for their EC um services unless it is directly tied to their IEP, and immediately we're at a four. So we just need to make sure that this is standardized in our standard operating procedures so that no matter who is here, no matter who is employed, no matter who is the superintendent, that is a part of how Durham Public Schools responds to EC scheduling. Um, so in our next report, you will see that I will share in the spring um EC access data uh with regard to core curriculum in the general ed classrooms. Students who are provided these services via their IEP, they still have pull-out, they still have resource. But what you will find is uh we have real sustainability in our co-teaching push-in and early intervention um areas of support for EC where staff is uh stable. And so you know that we have vacancies, and so that still d- does put some of our schools and perhaps our neediest schools, these twenty-four schools, some of them are still um at risk with those vacancies. Um, and so next report, I will be providing that EC access data uh on the settings. I'll be providing some progress monitoring indicators, and I'll also explicitly share our data in literacy and math aligned to EC, um, students with disabilities, and we will also be looking at our um um our Educator's Handbook data where we look at disciplinary responses to EC. Additionally, I just wanted to lift up um Dr. Giovanni's team Priority Three. That is where I know that you have provided EC supplements and things like that for hard-to-feel vacancies. And so that is where you will hear more about teacher retention, staffing stability, vacancies, et cetera. That will be in the Priority Three update, which I think is January or, yes, I think January. Next slide, please. Next is professional learning. Shout out to Ms. McNulty um and the PL team. Our professional learning is rated at a level-three initial implementation. I have lots of acronyms here, and I have spelled them all out for um the public. So we do UFLY, which is University of Florida Literacy Institute. It is our standard tier-two resource at K-2 literacy. Um, and so we use UFLY. Uh, we are wanting to provide aligned professional learning of depth of knowledge or DOK, and then we're also looking to strengthen our PLCs as well as our content-specific professional learning. Um, however, we're doing all these things, it still looks different across schools. Professional learning looks different across all schools. It's not yet functioning as a coherent system uh that is tightly aligned to what we see in our walkthroughs in our classroom, how we respond to the data with professional learning. Um, that is still not systematized across all of our schools. Um, and so our next steps are classic curriculum and instruction next steps. We are going to finalize a district professional learning plan at middle of the year that responds to our middle-of-the-year data. Middle of the year, we will have EOC data, M-class data, as well as benchmark data across all schools. Uh, and so we will say, what will we need to do to finish the year out strong for our schools and our staff? Um, also, we will have our IOTs or Instructional Leadership Teams routinely analyze data by uh student work and professional learning impact. So basically, if we go to a professional learning on depth of knowledge, do I see depth of knowledge increasing in the classroom as I visit our schools? We want our principals to be watching that data and monitoring and having good conversations. We want to make sure our board gets a return on investment. Next slide, please. This one is on uh English language learners. Shout out to Sashi, Sashi. EL supports are also at a level-three implementation. Schools are using access data, um, which is great. Um, and we have small group instruction, visuals, um, talking proto- talking routines and protocols, and our international teachers bring a level of enormous cultural and linguistic assets in our classrooms. Um, our access-aligned routines are not new, to be clear, but this level of consistency is new. Uh, some of our secondary schools are fully implementing them, and others are are in early implementation. And so if you remember our access EL data, it looks phenomenal in K-5, not so much in 612. And so uh we're seeing promising indicators. Uh, we have EL students who have made strong progress in Math I and English II that you will see in just a minute. And our BOI data shows us that at in our K-5 levels, um, M-class ELs are making gains. Um, they are making gains in grades one through four. Again, that speaks to that kindergarten issue I talked about before. So between now and spring, we're going to uh move full speed ahead. We're going to increase our department professional learning on differentiation and language acquisition. Uh, Sashi and Laura Perry provided professional learning to our principals last month on that. We're going to continue that work. Um, ELs look force are going to be integrated in our E-Walk tool, which is our classroom walkthrough tool. Um, we're going to be providing dashboards that provide EL progress in particular on the data metrics that we already co- uh connect or collect. And then last but not least, we want to increase our multilingual family communication, uh, not just on a progress report and report card days, but also when students are struggling with grade level assessments and classroom assessments. Next slide, please. The next slide is on the Equity Audit. Shouts out to uh Dr. I and her team. Equity Audit is at a level-two, planning and exploring. Uh, and so in the impact meetings at these twenty-four schools, we did see equity focus. IOTs and PLCs having conversations. They're starting those conversations around disaggregated data. We have equity equity champions at some of our schools and not all of our schools. Uh, we're just not where we need to be with this, quite frankly. Um, equity monitoring is uneven because of how we report data. Equity work sometimes stays stays at the program level. We want to do programs um instead of really focusing on the impact on teaching and learning. And our family, student, and staff uh voice is not systematically captured in our processes and embedded into our continuous improvement cycles. Um, so continuous improvement in schools uh supports. And my team, we will be leading a district-wide audit, um, building internal equity dashboard and integrating our findings into our school improvement plans so that this work is not separate, is a part of the work that schools do. Uh, this is a key piece right here to the answer to how do we, how many schools need to improve, e- especially for historically um underserved populations. We have to make sure we have an equity lens on everything that we do. Next slide, please. So I'll put all these uh strategies together. You'll see MTSS, EC, PL, EL. They're all at initial implementation at a three, and the Equity Audit and Opportunity Gaps are still um planning and exploring. So overall picture for Priority One is, we have strong structures. We have all the things, um, but we are inconsistent in our depth and reach across our schools. Uh, the system of monitoring and support and accountability hasn't really caught up with our aspirations for academic excellence um and equity. Uh, this is where the school tiering system that I uh talked to the board about previously, how it comes to light. Um, so you can see here, um, school by school in our spring report, you'll be able to see school by school where implementation is strong on these things and where we are intervening to support um, put to put better structures and supports in place. Next slide. So connected to a priority, we have both our growth metrics as well as our per proficiency proficiency metrics. The most fresh data that I have for you would be our BOI of M-class, which you will see here. This gives you an overall report on literacy as we compare from beginning of year last year to beginning of year this year. You can see here, overall, we see gains in grades one through five, especially a strong cohort movement as you look at that kindergarten who was last year at thirty-seven point one, and now as first graders, they're at fifty-two point five. And so we see that we are making strong movements for our students. Kindergarten dipped about two points, which connects to the early childhood work that I spoke about earlier. And from a curriculum and instruction or continuous improvement cycle, uh, this just tells us that K-2 work is taking hold. Um, and we really need to understand and address what's happening at kindergarten entry um so that we can have an impact on upper levels, elementary as well. Next slide. So I'm two more to go. Um, so this slide is telling you our our the same data by M-class. These, this is by student group. So you can see, looking down the columns, those are the grade levels, and looking horizontally horizontally, those are our student groups. When we disaggregate the data that you just saw by student group, it tells a different story, does it not? The story becomes sharper to us. We see early grade gains for several group, including ELs and students with disabilities, which suggests that our tier-one and our intervention practices are beginning to work for them. Um, and at the same time, though, we see that there are declines in our upper level elementary um for some groups, particularly Black and Asian students in certain grades, which connects back to what I said previously, opportunity gaps and equity equity strategies. This is why we're moving uh to our tiered system. So the question is not just, are we moving as a district? But what groups and what grades are we doing a good job at moving forward? Next slide, you will see that we have our MOI benchmark data for high school, which gives us projected proficiency so that we have progress monitoring towards our EOC goals. Uh, so here you see Math I, Math III, Biology, and English II. Overall, comparing to last semesters, uh, last year's semester one, Math I is up by seven point eight. Biology is up by six point two, English essentially flat, and Math III has gone down eight point six percentage points. Um, so our high school redesign is paying off in in our supports. Uh, but in Math III is a system-wide concern that requires targeted action on rigor and readiness from our Curriculum and Instruction Department. So this is a classic continuous improvement moment. We don't need to guess. Uh, we need to use the data, identify root causes, adjust instruction, provide interventions and professional learning accordingly, and go back and make sure that professional learning is being seen in our classrooms. Next slide, and almost the last. This one is showing you that same EOC MOI data by student group. Again, you can see it tells a different picture. When we disaggregate this by our student groups, we see strong gains in math, especially for Black and EL students. Biology gains across most group, but Math III declines across almost groups. Um, and there's mixed patterns in Math III. So this tells us that acceleration is possible, um, and that we see it in Math I and Biology, uh, but we do not yet have a system built where exo- acceleration- Uh, but we do not yet have a system built where acceleration carries all the way up to math three and beyond, which, uh, li- looks back at our structures for PLC and developing lessons and data analysis at the school level. Uh, this is directly tied to the strategies that you've seen tonight. Curriculum, rigor, MTSS, professional learning, EL supports, equity, it all plays out here in this data. So, in the spring, I will bring this data, more data back. Uh, our next report will connect student level results to our school's implementation of these strategies. And you will see where we have strong practice and evidence, uh, and how it lines up with the data results and where we need to intervene. Last slide, praise the Lord. As I come to a conclusion here, uh, our commitment is really straightforward and I heard, I hope you heard me clearly. We need to do fewer things with more clarity, period. Um, less noise, less words, more evidence of the work. Um, and a reporting structure that really lets us know what we expect from schools and a disciplined continuous improvement cycle that holds central office accountable for supporting schools with those strategies. So, in full honesty, it is going to take us a little time to fully align our internal monitoring systems to this new way of reporting. Um, but from this point forward, our priority updates will all follow this approach. I met with, um, Dr. Giovanni and her team this morning to walk them through this process. Dr. Pittman and I talked about priority two, so we're cooking up. Everyone will follow this same process and this same structure. For priority one, um, if, with the board's, uh, support, I would love to return in the spring after our MOY concludes. That will be February, it's just March when we have a full comprehensive data set. Um, and in that report, I would love to share with you our tier one adjustments, progress monitoring routines, uh, use of rigorous tasks. Want to share more data with you around student groups, um, in our, in our school level tiering. I will be able to share with you, um, schools that can serve as models. I will have a crew with me that can talk about how this lives and breathes in their schools. Um, we will, uh, also want to share how central services have adjusted our supports and our practices to match the needs of the district. Uh, so, as I close here, thank you to the academic services team, our school leaders, our teachers and our students for our fo- for their focus thus far. Um, thank you for your time and your efforts and all your approvals of curriculum and resources and it all comes to play in this work. So, I turn it back over to Dr. King. We have any questions or comments?
All right, um, thank you so much. Um, I'll just, I'll go ahead and say that I'm very excited about this new way of presenting the data. Um, systems only work if everyone understands the system. So, I love how you were saying, you know, less, you know, and more detail, all of that makes sense. And so, you know, this is beautiful. I love to see us moving in this direction. I'll go ahead and, let's see, I saw Ms. Chavez and then I think, and, um, Chair Olmstead, and we'll go from there, so go ahead.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. They, um, this is really excellent, very exciting. So, thank you. Um, you tied together so many, excuse me, so many different areas. I love the, the thread of consistency and collaboration that runs through it. So, um, yeah, that was very exciting. I was, I'm glad you went through it. Reading the slides, I was a bit, I got more out of it, hearing you, hearing you present. I wanted to just say two things or make two points. I really like the integration of equity into everybody's work. It should be that way. Not that it's not, but even, there's always room to bring it in more, rather than think of it as a siloed sort of project, you know, that one or a few people are responsible for. Um, and then, the other thing is, um, I was just, I'm happy to see, you know, all of it. But, um, the pre-K part, the alignment with our, um, elementary school programming, that's really important. I've been in two days of programming around education and pre-K and, um, early childhood education was a, a major topic. So, I've been thinking about the many, uh, foundational, you know, benefits that come from that. So, um, glad to see that work as well. And, uh, yeah, this is great. So, I'll thank you for, um, letting us know you'll be back and, and what you'll, you know, bring to us in the, in the coming months. So, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for a comprehensive presentation. I agree with Ms. Chavez. I got a lot more out of it from listening to you and I might have to go watch it again to make sure I capture everything. Um, a couple of things that I heard that were really, it's like, yes, this is good. Um, and the fact that we're building systems that outlast people, that we're building, this is how Durham Public Schools does business. I feel like I say that often. And so, that's important that we're building that from a curriculum and instruction standpoint. Uh, hearing about the rigor part was really interesting to me too about, um, how we need to make sure we're increasing rigor for our classes. It makes me wonder, because I know we have a lot of teachers who might be, um, residency licensed or second career and the rigor, sometimes we teach how we think we were taught. And how do you introduce that rigor part, which really takes that to the next level? So, I'm, that's in my head of how do we think about keeping teachers longer? To help make sure that they're getting that practice on that rigor and can really increase that for our students. Um, glad to hear about disaggregating data and that equity piece going all across. I hope that in that, we're auditing, but also building tools that go across the whole district, right? Not just in academics, but also in operations and all the other, um, places that we use. A couple of things that also stood out to me to this, I think, for us to keep in mind as a board. You named hire some behavior challenges a couple of times in there. And what does that look like for us to, what do we need to do to be supporting schools that have some of those challenges? Um, and then, talking about, we know that the federal dollars are gone and some of those extra opportunities we have for learning are not there for students. But we also know that some of our students are going to different after-school and summer programming. Is there an opportunity for us to partner with those groups and say, hey, during the summer, when you have them, Boys and Girls Club, Durham Parks and Rec, whoever? Here's some instructional things that could be done to help increase learning, make sure students, um, don't lose learning over that summer slump. Um, even, you know, in a technology world, are we pushing out something to parents over the summer? Or, or some of those breaks to help, just help fill in those gaps. Um, so, dreaming a big idea, but I think it's one of those things that we're, unfortunately, I don't think gonna get that federal dollars back anytime soon. So, what does it look like to think creatively as a community about how we support student learning? Um, all of this is really exciting. Looking forward to the things to come back, um, and more information to come, so thank you. Oh, sorry, can I add one more piece? Really appreciate that disaggregated data and the attention to strategies that are making sure that we're serving our underserved students. Want to make sure we're continuing to lift that up. And as I know, you said you're focusing your impact groups on low-performing schools or schools that have just moved out of low-performing status. But I think about how we have disparities across all of our schools. So, even though you might have an A or B or C, uh, how do we make sure those schools still are digging deeply in that disaggregated data and getting some of that support to close those gaps for students, so?
Ms. Carrattan.
Thanks so much for this great presentation, Ms. Sidbury. Um, I'm super excited to be, um, for the shifts in the presentation of strategic plan data, for the additional data, um, eager to see more and, um, to see, um, as we move forward, as you've noted a number of times, like, we want to continue doing more of what's working and not do what's not working. So, this is a way for us to know and to learn more about that. So, I'd love for eventually for us to get to a place where not only are we getting these reports right, you know, on a regular basis throughout the year, looking at each of the metrics related to all of our strategic plan, but also looking at during budget cycle, how each of the budget pieces connect to how we, what's working and what we know works to help us get towards that North Star of what we want to accomplish here in our district. So, um, and I sense that, um, yeah, I'm, I'm eager to see a calendar of like, when we're gonna get these, um, updates because this is so, such important work here. Um, and also, it's just the very beginning, um, of, of the board receiving regular updates on like, where we are with regards to the strategic plan, so thank you so much.
Ms. Byer.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Sidbury, for, um, diving in and actually presenting a lot of data, being transparent about things that we're not doing well. I think that it is important to be honest and transparent with our community that we've got work to do. I also look for future data that might be more qualitative in nature, might be about where we have the most nationally board-certified teachers and whether that has an impact, whether, how our retention is going better at some schools than others or the veteran status, you know, the staffing mix, um, where we have bilingual staff. Like, the secret sauce is our people, right? And so, any lessons learned that we could come and, and quantify, student attendance data, where it's better and whether, where it's struggling. Like, some of those lessons that we learn within our schools that we can lift up as exemplars. I, I think there's probably, besides beginning of the year and DIBL's data, there's probably more to the story that y'all can continue to inform as we help to support best practices and focus this work alongside y'all's efforts. Does that make, it wasn't really a question, it was like, me dreaming aloud, like, what more could paint the full, the fullest picture? Um, early literacy stuff, where's it working? Does, you know, is growing together and some of the year-round actually having academic gains at those classes? Are, you know, anything that y'all can continue to bring us that, that informs student outcomes in qualitative ways? But it's not just data about test scores to me. It's, it's the whole story as y'all, that picture for us, I think is super helpful.
Mr. Tab.
Thank you very much. My colleagues have pretty much wrapped it all up in a nutshell. So, thank you very much for your, for your work. Um, it's great work and, um, looking forward to the next phase of what comes out of this. Thank you.
All right, um, oh, I thought you were. I just want to, um, mention that, um, all of that and, um, I'm also dreaming of a time where we prioritize our strategic planning reports at the beginning of our agendas. So, it's like the first thing that we talk about and then everything kind of comes from that. Um, I also, um, I'm, I'm curious about the data that we are prioritizing. There's so much data. So, what as a board member, can we identify this is, just like we have systems for the reporting, you know, this is how, this is what we're assessing, this is what we're prioritizing in assessment and how we follow that um, to help inform our decision-making also. Um, and, what is that? Oh, and also, um, I see our strategic plan as a living document. Like, sometimes people, they, when they get ready to, you know, they say, oh, we gotta create a new strategic plan. I think that our strategic plan is, is beautiful. Um, and I, I want to see it grow. So, I'm wondering, like, when, when something gets to a level five, like, we reach that and it gets to a level five, then what, what happens? So, those are the things that I'm curious about. And, um, I think Dr. Lewis wanted to make some comments.
Just want to, um, make sure the board understands, you know, we, we particularly pulled out some data, uh, this year or, or for this presentation, um, and we wanted to specifically identify data sets that we could compare over time and that we could compare, um, across subgroups. Um, and that's kind of impacted by where we are in the school year. So, uh, when we come back with additional presentations, there'll certainly be, um, additional data. If we did this two weeks from now, we would have been given, been able to give you a good bit more data. For instance, um, elementary schools and middle schools, um, will be doing benchmarks, um, next week. And so, you know, given another week, we could have had that data for you, but where we're sitting, uh, right now, we were kind of limited to, um, just to that data. A couple of other things I just want to point out that are, that are gonna be critical as we, as we move forward. Um, a couple of things that Ms. Sidbury, uh, kind of mentioned, but, but I just want to pull out. Is this, this issue of shift to consistency, right? Um, and, and that is a, that is gonna be a real challenge for us, a real, if you will, cultural shift, um, for Durham Public Schools. Um, that has not been a hallmark of this division's, uh, work. Uh, we have very often, um, uh, kind of valued the notion that, you know, every school did some things, did things differently from an instructional perspective. Um, and so, that's a, that's a shift for us in terms of, um, um, moving to more consistency across, uh, the district. And the other piece that I think is important to remember, um, is that what we hope this work will do will also be to help us think through, uh, how we make lots and lots of purchasing decisions, how we do lots and lots of the work that we do, how we make lots and lots of decisions. In our conversation this morning with the, um, Strategic Priority Three Group, we were talking about the notion that as we begin to think about purchases that we might want to make district-wide or even in individual schools. You know, um, if we are doing this work the way we're supposed to do it from a strategic plan perspective, there would be a very serious review of whether or not the work that we're, the purchase that we're considering making or the expenditure that we're considering aligns specifically with the strategic plan, right? And if it doesn't, we have to ask ourselves questions about why we are, um, aligning resources to that. And particularly where that becomes really a challenge for us is when we start talking about what I like to call, uh, legacy practices, right? So, things that aren't necessarily connected to the strategic plan, but we've done them forever, right? And everybody kind of expects us to do them. Uh, but we don't have, they don't connect to the strategic plan. We don't have very much evidence of their effectiveness, yet we continue to, um, align resources and assign resources to those things. So, those are, uh, real challenges that I think we will face, uh, as we move this work forward. Uh, we are excited for the work though and, um, excited to be able to continue to prevent, provide, uh, this level of presentation to you in terms of this, particularly this strategic, uh, level review, in terms of focusing really strongly on the strategies that are embedded in our strategic plan and where we are in terms of their implementation and how we move, uh, further and further along that road. So, thank you, board members.
Thank you, Dr. King. First, let me thank our board for, for the feedback. Uh, it's always helpful in terms of, um, where we've been with our strategic plan updates and the feedback that you received tonight. Certainly, I want to thank Dr. King, his team, Ms. Sidbury and the team members that are in, in attendance as we continue to think about the shifts in the work. And so, you're right, every, every single report that we, that we bring to this board should be a strategic plan update. You know, because that's the work that we should be engaged in every single day. We shouldn't come to the board where they were, uh, you know, uh, doing, with a report and then say, oh, let me go back and do the strategic plan work. That work, um, should happen, you know, all the time, right? And so, I'll, you often hear me say that hope is not a strategy. And so, we cannot wait until we're, our students are given the assessments and, and hope they do well. We should have those leading indicators, some of the data that we shared with you tonight as relates to how our students are doing. Yes, we want ninety percent of our students to meet or exceed standards, but it's difficult for a student to meet or exceed a standard, a standard if he or she cannot read. And so, the data, the DIBL's data that we shared tonight kind of highlights some of the, um, uh, just how our schools look at data and intervene early on so that the students can now read a passage to say, identify author's purpose or, or, or main idea. And so, when we think about where we've been with our strategic plan updates prior, prior to this, it was a lot of just generalities. And when, so, when we, we measure and report on general, generalities, we typically will, will fail. But when you began to measure your action steps and performance, um, I'm sorry, your action steps and when your, eh, action steps and performances measures, you, you succeed. And then, when you measure your action steps and performance and report out on it, you accelerate that, um, achievement. And so, I hope you saw tonight that the good, the bad and the ugly, you know, what's, what's working well for us? What do we need to kind of tighten some things up? And then, most importantly, what do we need to focus our professional development and support down to the, to the classroom? There's, there's, there's only three ways to improve student performance at scale. And one of those ways is to, um, increase the level of content that our students are engaged in. And Ms. Sidbury talked about, uh, ensuring that our staff are, uh, adhering to our district adopted resources. The second way is to increase the level of skill and knowledge of our teachers, continuing to provide the professional support in terms of increasing, uh, the DOK. And then, third is to increase the level of engagement, uh, of our students. You know, how our students engage with that, with that content. And so, I'm excited about where we're going. Uh, it's, it's a lot of work and certainly appreciate all of our, um, folks in the buildings, our principals, teachers and other staff that are really, uh, on the ground doing this work. So, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sidbury.
Thank you. I hear the pause. Thank you so much. All right, so, um, I think the floor is still yours, Dr. Lewis, um, for the, oh, yeah, the, the budget prior, wait. oh yeah, the, the budget prior, wait, the finance update. Yes.
Good evening, Chair Harold Goff, board members and Dr. Lewis. Strategic Plan Goal One, folks just told me what kind of money they're going to need when I was coming in the door. So I've been put on notice. So for this, for this presentation, we just want to pick up where we left off with the board at our, at our last meeting and just to lift up that we, like many districts, are managing enrollment decline curveballs and, and making necessary shifts to take care of their, the, the obligations that stem from that, right? And, and, and the big, the big piece, you know, that we revisit here on the next, if we advance to the next slide, we just lift back up those enrollment figures that were reported to the board in that, in that shift in enrollment that we experienced this school year. On the next slide, we just sort of remind the board about the implications that has for how much money we have to share with charter schools and our students who are enrolled in those schools. And just putting that back out there because it's not something that we talk about all the time. And in the next slide, just a reminder of that chart and, and the need for us to, to find $4.7 million to pass along to charter schools beyond what the district would have need to have done based on its enrollment projections previously. The next slide, we just remind, just lift up reminders about other risks that we're monitoring. And you'll hear me talk about this some more as well in the next presentation and the superintendent's budget priorities. But again, just continued enrollment volatility. We were obviously monitoring situations in our community that make kids not want to come to school and still assessing whether or not that has impacted our charter schools equally in terms of those elements. Continuing to monitor what will happen with Medicaid funding in North Carolina, other federal surprises, right? So conversation is already starting to happen. We see headlines, folks are negotiating a way to avoid another shutdown of the federal government in the next month or so. Continuing to monitor what's going on at the state level, still no budget and, and hearing very high-profile conversations about things other than the budget. And then obviously continuing to monitor the, the impact of inflation. The next, the next slide, we talk about just some potential opportunities for, I want to skip up one more, please, if we can. I think somehow they got flip-flopped. If we can go to the next slide that says next steps, it's just a reminder of some steps that we talked about with the board at the last meeting about things that staff will be evaluating in terms of what measures we'll, we'll contemplate. And we highlight this particular step because it's, it's the first on the list that we discussed last time. And, and that's sort of where we are in the process. So it's evaluating service contracts for cancellation or reduction, right? And, and obviously this is something that is, is definitely a preferable action, right? So this is not necessarily something that will, will affect our personnel, right? And, and our folks on our payroll and, and something that we can do sort of as a, as a first measure. Some of these other measures, they are underway nonetheless, right? So we're sort of managing these initiatives simultaneously. So we are operating in a, in a hiring-free situation, right? So we're continuing to prioritize things such as EC, bus drivers, positions required by law are things that are just absolutely critical and essential for district operations. And so we're working as a group to evaluate those positions and, and first and foremost, looking at things that are currently vacant and, and trying to reach a consensus as a leadership team of what are these things and, and giving our HR department clarity on how they move forward during this, during this space. We've already adjusted those purchasing deadlines and, and making necessary judgment calls. So we know that there are things that happen later in the year, such as graduation, that still have to occur. And so just making good judgment along the way about things that we have to make room for and concessions for beyond that deadline, minimizing travel. This is something that's sort of been in place even before I came to the district and that we, we continue to scrutinize travel very tightly as a leadership team and have conversations about that. All that to say, these are all measures that we want to keep, keep under consideration ahead of resorting to that last measure of a reduction in force. So we're on the first bullet tonight just to start talking about those efforts and seeking sort of board attention to that. So if we can go back to the previous slide, we worked with, worked with my colleagues to evaluate contracts that were currently encumbered in the district and asked them to evaluate those for necessity, evaluate those for opportunities to reduce. And so I appreciate the work that my colleagues put into that. So we're asking them to do some things that are maybe a little new and different here and, and to really kind of think about these things. And so these are contracts that came forward. And so we had, you know, the first two came from our operations team and they're specifically focused on our mowing or lawn care services in the district. And just moving forward with the understanding that these are things that we can do for ourselves with our staff and, and sort of revert back to that practice of handling it in-house rather than outsourcing mowing for certain zones in the district. So we did leverage parts of these contracts at the beginning of the year. We, it has been some months since we've needed to tap into those contracts and the, the balances that are on the screen, so were, were what was remaining that the operations team could have used later in the year as we kind of work our way into springtime. And so then the termination of those contracts would free up those dollar amounts that were otherwise encumbered for anticipated lawn care services that we would now do ourselves. Site Logic, or I presume that's how they pronounce their names, is, was in a, in a relationship that the board entered into on, on a consent agenda item in June of 2021. And that contract originally had an expiration date for the end of 2022, so it was a one-year contract. Upon its recommendation to come through, did some research on that. And it looks like it's been sustained with a series of change orders, the most recent one that came to the board in the spring of 2025. And so this is a service that came forward and I'll anticipating questions around this one and I know my colleagues who are more familiar with that relationship are here to answer questions about that, that work. The final item is a contract in the Human Resources Department that we're seeking to reduce. This is one that was not originally approved by the board due to the dollar amount. So it was originally about a $25,000 contract. And so looking to reduce that by 20 and bring that down to 5,000. And that one is really just sort of an information for the board that staff is intending to curtail the use of that contract and reduce that encumbrance. And specifically, this is one that administration entered into to provide virtual interpreting services as necessary for HR matters. The, the, the team has looked at that and based on usage so far this year, they feel like they can curtail that significantly. Collectively, all of these items would, would put 235,391 sort of back on the table for us to redirect towards the challenge that we're working on and, and help sort of prune back our need to address, to, to tackle from some of these other measures. If we can advance two more slides, so we sort of get to the, the recommendation that's on the table and that we discuss in the precis and that seeking to terminate these three contracts. And then the, the other contract we referenced was for information purposes. And so we're, at this point, we'll open it up for questions and I expect we'll have sort of engagement around the table with my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter. Board members, Ms. Chavez.
Thank you. Thanks for explaining about the, the mowing services and the interpretation services. Let's jump right in and hear about Site Logic. Obviously, we had some folks speak on that and now I'm looking at the, the website. So why, why would we cut that?
Good evening, board members. We ha, we hired a DPS person this, late this summer, this fall to help, help oversee some of that. In addition, we have two new staff members that have quite a bit of experience dealing with energy sustainability. So the program itself is not going away. We're shifting some of the responsibilities of people who already work in-house for us.
Thank you. And so just a follow-up, is there anything that we're losing? Anything that those individuals aren't able to do, you know, but yeah, that Site Logic was doing any, any piece of it?
So in conversation with Ms. Devin Mitchell and Ms. Laurie Blake Reed, we don't think that we're going to lose anything that we are doing at this present time. Think we may be able to expand it even more with the help of those two people.
Thank you.
Any other, Ms. Byer?
Yeah, so while we're on this specific contract, I have observed and been told many, many years at different times that that actually, contract was actually more than paying for itself in energy savings. And if that is not true, then then it makes me feel like it's something we should have cut a long time ago. So it's not clear to me at all what the, what the, what the service we were paying for, who the, how many people were working for us as contractors, what grant writing they were doing, whether they had involvement in our electric school buses project, like, and I want to say to the students that keep coming, and I know Dr. Lewis, you're planning to meet with them soon, this board shares the goals of sustainability, both in education and in better environmental practices and, and looking forward to the 26 bond. I'm glad we have internal capacity, but do we have enough and do, do, do folks understand our commitment and drive for that going forward? You know, it seems an area that we had made progress, but we don't have good answers for our students that keep coming to our podium. We don't have a climate action plan like the city and the county already have. And so I sit here going, we pass resolutions that say things, and Dr. Lewis, you weren't here then, but you know, and, and a lot of your team wasn't. But how do we, how do we take ownership and, and lead this work forward when we thought that these consultants were doing that alongside our staff and our team? So I don't know that I've asked anything that's, that even feels like a coherent question. But boy, it's frustrating to be here and, and pulling this very large contract mid-year at a time when we're going in, in the midst of a CIP for a bond next spring that should have a big piece of sustainability in it. So, yeah.
So I don't, I don't have the answers. I do have some additional questions to go along with what you're asking. I think my first question is, why would we want to continue to engage in a contract, a contract with a contractor vendor, any vendor, where we don't know what the deliverables actually are? Because it sounds like you, that's what you said. I am looking at this data dashboard and I appreciate it. Looks like it was last updated in April of 2023. And it says so far in the second year, up to April 2023, Site Logic has helped DPS save additional $770,000 by reducing energy and an additional 7% from the prior year. I think it says they've submitted a utility rebate. What were the, you know, it would be nice to know what the results are of those things. But it's not clear that they updated, have updated the dashboard since 2025. So do we think that if they're not doing that since 2023? So if they're not doing the public-facing work, what makes us think that they're doing the internal-facing work? Has that happened with, in the district? Has there been such an assessment as to whether or not they're doing the internal work? I think the other question that I would ask us as a board is that in March of 2025, we hired a sustainability coordinator. Sustainability coordinator has had multiple conversations with members of the Sunrise team, has reached out recently and has not heard back from them to talk more about what they're asking for and how they can support that work. Why are we hiring people internally to do something that we had a contract to do? If you expected it to be done with the contract. I mean, we approved it on the personnel report on March 13th, 2025. And then I think the other question that I had, I guess for attorney and administration is, I'm looking at the contract that Ms. Byer requested be sent and it's a one-year contract. And if the contract is one year and year over year, administration has been paying in excess of the $90,000 threshold where we are, then that should have come before the board in the first place? So is there a recommendation for the contract to come before the board? Are you just going to keep paying them outside of the threshold?
If I understand your question, it is if administration is recommending continuing a contract or not continuing, I guess, restarting a contract with Site Logic, is that the question?
Well, I think, I, I think that's why I asked the attorney, right?
I bet. Sorry.
What I, what I've seen is that there's the contract and there were two change orders is the information that we were provided. We were told that there's between now and the end of the year, over $100,000 would be paid to Site Logic. So that's why it's coming to the board to terminate it because it's in a dollar amount that would require the board's action. I don't, I don't know that I, I have not seen the actual contracts. Because this was just coming as a termination or convenience, you know, we didn't study the contracts. Or I didn't anyway. I think Jonathan Blumberg's mom has been working.
And is board action required for administration to separate our, separate DPS from Site Logic?
If there's a contract in place and you would pay over $100,000 during the remaining term of the contract, then yes, board action would be required.
If there's a contract in place?
Correct.
Okay. What about the other agencies on this slide? Do we, they're not, I don't know. Do we know the answer to that? Is board action required for that? Or is that something?
Yeah. So the first two that are on the list that are the mowing services, they were, they were approved for amounts in excess of $90,000 on the standard DPS service contract. And so, so those, I think, right, will fit in our interpretation of it would need board approval because those, those were originally approved by the board. And then the final item, that's the HR contract, was well below the board threshold. And we've, we're just bringing that one forward for transparency purposes that we're reducing that contract with them.
I hear another pause. Did you, Chair Omsden, did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
I did. I appreciate y'all doing this exercise and bringing these contracts to us. I appreciate y'all doing this exercise and bringing these contracts to us. I'm gonna start with SiteLogic and then I have a couple other ones. Do we have a sense of what, I think maybe we, if there's consensus with the board, I'm interested in a little more analysis on that. Just how much the contract is year to year and then how much savings we might be seeing. Essentially, is this contract paying for it? So, and then also there's a lot, like in the information they have on the website, it talks a lot about grant management, applications, that kind of thing. And wanting to know, like I understand we brought in someone who does some sustainability, but is that a realistic capacity? And I say that because I know that we have staff that are holding multiple things, right? So is there actually capacity for that person to be doing some of that grant work and things like that? I also know, recognize why this is here because it's important that we make some changes in order to find some dollars. So that's my interest in the SiteLogic one, if there was opportunity for a little more digging into that before we made a decision. Zooming back out a little bit though, you brought about $235,000 to us when there's a $4 million, I think, gap. 4.7 approximately to be exact, closer to exact. So I'm wondering, one, these are mostly service contracts for operations, if there's anything that might come from academics or other places. And two, you know, do you think this two and three might help us get closer to 4.7 on your next steps list, your next bullets?
Certainly, right. So I think we are, we're in that space, right, of still scrutinizing contracts. So there may be more, you know, that come forward as we continue to scrutinize those. And then also, right, we're evaluating vacant positions, right, as sort of that next layer. And so we're close as a working group, right, to arriving at some consensus of what, you know, and we're really looking at vacancies in three buckets, right? And so we're categorizing those as, are we freezing it? Are we filling it? Or are we eliminating the vacancy, right? And so we're very close to completing our work evaluating, right, those lists of vacancies. And then once we've got that solidified, we'll be able to really attach a dollar value around the fiscal impact, right, of those decisions, right? And so that will be, so we'll have some clarity on that next action step soon. So we're sort of managing these projects in tandem, right? So the contract work has been outward facing. And then while my colleagues have been evaluating that, in tandem with that, we've been setting up the infrastructure to evaluate vacancies in the district to go along with that. And so we expect to have information on that and the potential impact of that very shortly. I think also another sort of important point is that we are very close to having sort of public-facing 2025 audited financial statements, right? And we'll have some conversations with the board about the financial condition at the conclusion of 2025. That foreshadowing, I'm satisfied with that and the work that we did in the course of the 24-25 year and how that wrapped up. But once we have that buttoned up in the next couple of weeks, we'll have some additional information there that we think will help the board to sharpen up some decision-making as well. So just lots of things that we're kind of evaluating right now.
Let's hopefully hear some more to come. I think thinking back to Dr. King's statements around thinking about the forward budget, looking at our strategic plan. And I'm sure you all are doing this, but as we're scrutinizing our current contracts, how are we using our strategic plan as guiding principle there? And as much as possible protecting what's student-facing, student-achievement work. So looking forward to more conversations. Do not like these types of conversations, but I know they're important to think about. And we're not alone, right? Other districts across the state and those across the country are having similar conversations around their budgets. And recommendations are all over for that type of thing. So thank y'all for being on top of this. And also look forward to continuing to think about that enrollment plan because that also is an important part of how do we bring students back to their public schools in this conversation.
Let me just, yeah, let me first just acknowledge the difficulty in some of these decisions. Anytime you talk about wanting to gain upwards of $4.7 million and we're looking at contracts, these are going to be some tough decisions with sometimes some competing interests. And there may be more contracts that we may bring that may, you know, be some tough decisions. And we do recognize we have to make those decisions again with the goal of try not to touch staff, try not to touch our schools in a way that will impede the work that we have forward. And I will just say this, and you know, to the students that came tonight. The what is not changing. We're still focused on energy conservation. I think it's just the who that's doing that work that's changing. You know, our team has met with groups of students and I'm planning to meet with them to continue those conversations around energy sustainability. And so I just want to be crystal clear that we're not, you know, taking our eyes off energy conservation. And so when I ask questions, you know, and here that we're just not getting the return on investment and we have someone else that's hired for that role, you know, I have to bring these recommendations to the board for consideration. And so I am comfortable moving forward, knowing that we do have someone that's still invested in this and we'll continue those conversations around energy conservation and hopefully bring some true savings that the board can really see as a result of that.
Well, with that, oh, Ms. Cardot.
I'll be brief. So just to clarify, I'm understanding that it's anticipated that the work that's being done with these contracts is not going to end, like lawns will get mowed.
So you're, I'm trusting my colleagues on that, right, who assess that?
Yeah, Mr. Barnes can answer those questions.
Well, and interpretation will happen. That was on there as well.
I can answer that one.
The sustainability work will continue. So we don't, I also have some concerns that that's, that maybe we don't have enough capacity, but I trust that you all will come back to us, knowing that's the value of the board if that can't be done. But I'm hearing that like while the contracts will not be in place, we do have in-house staff that can do these things. Is that the case?
That is correct with regard to, I'd like to kind of parse them out just for transparency. So the mowing, Mr. Barnes has met with his team and has confirmed that for the rest of this year, we'll be able to manage that with the current staff and get the mowing done. However, there may be, and he is currently working with Mr. Teeter and Dr. Lewis on expanding the budget for the landscape and grounds crew, right? And so as we all know, generally, when you pay a contractor, it's significantly more than what you pay in-house staff. So that's with regard to the mowing piece. With regard to the sustainability piece, just really, you know, actually doing the climate work is really what we're looking at. And so Ms. Laurie Blake-Reed and Devon Mitchell, Senior Executive Director and a Director, as well as Mr. Lynch, are going to be continuing that work and actually doing a lot of the things that people continue to complain about, right, for the last several years. It just hasn't gotten done, right, under the current situation that we're under. So that was some of the frustration as well with regard to the climate work. And lastly, with regard to the translation piece, it's just a reduction. We budgeted that money out and so what we don't want is just the money to be kind of sitting there if it can be invested back into the classroom or wherever else is appropriate in the budget. So there's still $5,000 on the interpretation budget. And we've spent, I think it started out at 30, we've spent maybe, Jeremy, I don't know if you remember the numbers, they're low.
Couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, a couple hundred bucks so far. And so we're going to hold back 5,000 and then basically give back to the district that additional amount for the 20,000. So the short answer is yes, the work is not just going to be done, but I think as Mr. Barnes indicated, but it'll be done better in our estimation because we have evaluated and looked at all of these. I mean, was it done lightly, right? We want to make sure because ultimately, you know, working for Dr. Lewis, he's going to be accountable for the work that happens in this district. And so we take that very seriously. And when we looked at it, we are committed to ensuring and we're confident that when there comes back time to report to the board on all of this, the board will be impressed at the work that's going to be done on all of these aspects.
Thank you so much. That's, oh.
I have one more piece to that. Part of the reason that they were requiring this amount of contracts was because they didn't have the equipment. They thought they needed to be able to mow the grass and some of the vehicles, they needed to separate some of the teams. And so when I first got here this summer, we did purchase some additional equipment for our landscapers and a new vehicle that had been erected in a previous year that had not been replaced. And so I think that as we continue to do those things, we'll have more capacity within-house mowing. I'm not going to say if it rains every week for the spring that we won't get behind with mowing. There's a lot of that depends on the weather, but I do think we can get through the spring season without these contracts in place.
Thank you. Just, I do want to acknowledge also while I, that gives me some reassurance that we, this is, as colleagues have noted, this is a lot of, we have to find a lot of money. It's going to require some tough decisions. So I did want to just echo the desire voiced by, I think it was Chair Umstead, to that we please align all these decisions with the strategic plan. Like that's the, what this board, what this community has decided the priorities. And so the closer we can get to that, I think hopefully we can feel more comfortable with the tough decisions if the board can see where there's alignment or there's not. So thank you.
Ms. Rogers, I saw your hand. Do you still want to speak? And it is 8:48. I just want to be mindful. Maybe if we can give this just maybe two more minutes and then.
Yeah, I think one of my questions was, is there an analysis of what it would mean to do spend some more time doing a thorough investigation, how much money would be spent if the board didn't take action, ask you all not to take action on any of these contracts right now and sustain them for another month?
So I would say for the two lawn care contracts, I can't see that they've been active, right, in quite some time. So they would remain idle. I think the HR contract's kind of in our control. It's pay as we use it. And we have intent to not use it to the degree that we thought we were going to. And so that's, and it's a contract kind of within staff purview. The SiteLogic contract would be the consideration. And so just looking at historic billing, right, it can range anywhere from 20 to 22,000 a month. And so October was as high as.
Then we pay for the dashboard, right?
So I think that's sort of the extent of what we're looking at would be the SiteLogic obligations. And then it does kind of sort of put more pressure on sort of other decisions we have to make down the line.
Thanks.
Chair Umstead?
I hear, just, I don't think I asked a little bit about this. I don't know if there's consensus from the board, but I'm kind of hearing from administration that the challenges or SiteLogic contract not kind of coming to the expectations that you thought it would have. And that's, feels like news to me. And so I would love, I mean, and if the board is amenable to this, bring this back to the January work session. But just a little more analysis around that, because I'm, I just, that's news to me. And so I would love to have a little bit more information before we make that decision and a little bit of information about how that capacity is being going to be held in-house.
Yeah, I do want to be thoughtful. I think I've tried to be pretty circumspect in kind of reflecting on the quality of work that we have gotten and received from SiteLogic. So I just want to be thoughtful around that. Obviously, they're a vendor and not an employee. But I do think that there's, as I indicated before, I think, kind of to, it was in February, I think, 2024 that there was conversation that the SiteLogic contract needed to be terminated because the system was not getting a return on the investment. They were not able to show that they were, that these savings, right, they were kind of paper savings. And so then we all know what happened in February, like later in February 2024. And so it was kind of pushed off, but I'm happy to do that. I do think perhaps if it makes the board more comfortable and you have the concerns, would the board perhaps be amenable to allowing operations to do an RFP, right? I don't know what the process was to select SiteLogic, but if that's the case, I would feel more comfortable with looking and making sure that if we're going to be paying this amount of money, that we at least be getting, put it out for a bid process so that we can ensure that we're getting quality work. So I think that's kind of where, if the board is amenable to that and not comfortable with just striking it out, because it really, administration is concerned about the expending this funding and not getting any benefit to the district.
I want to be mindful of the time that we're spending on this topic. And we're trying to decide whether or not we want to approve these, the cancellation of these contracts right now or if we want to, if we need to table this for, to have more information come back so that we can make more informed decisions in, at the January work session. So I saw Ms. Byer's hand and then I saw you turn on your light. So Chair Umstead?
I deal to Ms. Umstead, Chair Umstead finishing her thought.
I'm hesitant on RFP because that's a new contract and we're trying to resist new contracts, right? Like we're trying to scrutinize that. So I think I'm more just interested in learning more about what has been saved from this or what has been gained from the, from the partnership, from the contract, and then what capacity we have in-house to be able to do those things. I don't personally, don't, because if we have the capacity in-house, we shouldn't do an RFP for it.
Yeah, yeah, I, along the same lines, 2014, 15, we had a full-time person. We allocated a full-time sustainability position at that time. We made some progress with LED lighting. We didn't do it all. We, then we had a gap. And we kind of assigned the word sustainability to somebody's title. And then we had somebody new. And we moved forward in a lot of great ways, right? Energy, you know, none of the mini fridges and the, I mean, you know, we've done some stuff. We have one school with solar on the roof. But it's been in jumps and starts over 10 years. And I'm glad to know if we have capacity. I don't want to disparage anybody that we have a contract with currently. But if we could, either in small groups or at our January meeting, be shown what the plan is to actually take this work and actually actualize it. I think that would help me a great deal as y'all bring this and say, cut this relationship that is supposed to be paying for itself in energy savings. Show us it's not. I don't know. I just, that would help me a great deal on this one.
Ms. Cardot?
I really like the idea of getting an update in a board meeting about generally how we're, like what we're doing with regards to sustainability efforts and this being a piece of that. And I think it's important that during a board meeting so that the community can see it too. And it's time for us to get an update on what we're doing, what the gaps are, where we need to go and have a conversation about it.
I think it would be interesting to, if we do bring it back in January, to make that a great, that would be wonderful to, if that could be a bigger agenda item to talk about that in conjunction with the climate action planning and all of that thing too. It might be, you know, yeah, I'm not proposing that. I'm just lifting that up. And let's see, I saw Ms. Chavez's hand. I'm hoping at some point we can, I'm wondering if we need to entertain a motion, one way or the other.
I think I may be in the minority, but I'm okay with moving ahead with these cuts and then also having that presentation in January.
I am, I'm kind of leaning that way too, only because I know that this work is at the top of our, it's priority for us. So whether or not we have the contract with them or not, it's priority, even if we have to bring it back as another contract. And so I'm trusting our administration saying that we, you know, I would like to see the work that they've been doing and how we know we have the capacity for it. If they, you know, just bringing back more information just to reassure that we're making solid decisions. But also acknowledging that administration has already looked at this and we have to do something about the shortfall that we have. So can we entertain a motion?
Move that we terminate the contracts with BMB Triangle Enterprises, Inc. and BJNL Painting. and BJ and L Painting. And then direct staff to bring further information in January about site logic and sustainability in DPS.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Carter-Oh to approve the remove the term to have the termination of the contracts and to bring back more information at the January work session. B and B Triangle, B and B Triangle Enterprises, BJ BJ and L Painting. And you did not include site logic. I only see these.
Just for information, right? Yeah.
Okay, so again, we are approving to terminate the B and B Triangle Enterprises and BJ and L Painting only. And then bringing site logic back with more information at to the January work session. There any discussion?
I appreciate the motion. I just want to be clear that I'm voting no because I think we could save the money until we get the assessment of site logic and bring them back in if we determine that that work is being lost. And I think it's important for us to try to find the savings sooner and then get the evaluation. Because right now it seems like we're just sort of spending twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a month. And we're not sure what we're getting in return of it when we know we have a four-point-seven million-dollar deficit. I'm sorry, million-dollar deficit. And so like, we got to kind of start taking away at it. So that's why I'm voting no. I would like to, but I don't think Ms. Byer is going to be amenable to that. So I can just vote against it.
Dr. Lewis?
I think I just want to hear from our team and keep it in mind. I know we said the January work session, we have one full week before the winter holiday and then maybe one full week or maybe not, depending on agenda, review to get that information and ensure that we have the accurate information that the board wants. So do we want to look at the work session or the, and I'm also thinking about timing as well, the work session or the or the board meeting?
My preference would be January if in this motion, right? Because I would, we would want to pay as less as possible. But I don't, is that feasible?
I don't think it, and Mr. Morris jump in, but the work that we have been paying for, we haven't been getting is like all of that analysis on the utility bills. I think Mr. Teeter shared some additional utility information with me. So given the holiday, we would not be able to provide that information with fidelity with regard to why it is the recommendation that we terminate this contract.
So were you saying the for the work session or the board meeting? And I think you were saying just put January and not necessarily specify a work session or board meeting?
My preference was the work session, so we can have it sooner rather than later. But I guess I'm wondering, could we ask site logic for this information with a timeline of this, knowing that there's some conversations?
Again, I'm trying to be circumspect. No, we have not been able to obtain the information. I think I haven't, I mean, you can look at the dashboard and see that none of that's been updated, et cetera, right? And so I just, we would have to go through and pull people away from the other work and to go through and look at all of the utility bills, et cetera. So we have had the presentations, I think maybe four or five, and there has not been proof of this savings that is being alleged. And so given that if we are going to have to make this additional argument in order to show to the board that this contract is not cost-effective, it will require us going in and pulling all of the utility bills and getting all this information. Cannot do that in by the work session in January. It would not be feasible. I wouldn't be able to give you information that we could confidently say is accurate, given just a few days. Say again?
You said you already have information, which is what led to this decision, correct?
We don't have accurate information.
But there is information that that administration reviewed that led to the decision to say, we actually don't want to continue this contract.
Not that this is my possession, no. Site logic has come and presented information. And then when they were questioned about the data and the accuracy of the data, we're not able to sustain that, which is what led to Cabinet in February twenty twenty-four saying that this contract needed to be terminated. So in order to bring you the information to show that we are not getting a return on this investment, it will require us to go back and pull all of this information since the site logic contract was entered into, which is a substantial undertaking to the level of the the board's apparent requirement.
Is there data from February of twenty-four that you all discussed at Cabinet? I mean.
Yes.
Can you bring that? I mean, what?
I could, I would have to try to get, I mean, that's a long, that's a while ago. And it was multiple people that were here. Correct.
If site logic doesn't have the the data on the benefit that they are giving to our district, that that's a problem. Yeah, I. Do we want to amend the motion? I see Ms. Chavez's hand.
I just want to say I'm also going to vote no unless we amend it because I'm ready to cut this contract because there were apparently reasons before. The dashboard hasn't been updated. And if we want to re, you know, do the contract later, we can. But I'm I'm more interested in the presentation around sustainability, looking into climate, the climate action plan, that work. But the board can, I want us to direct that work to happen anyway. And I know administration, from what, you know, what I've heard, is already working on it, too. So to me, it's it's separate at this point. So I'm, you know, I believe that that's true. We have people with the capacity to do this work and move it forward. And we need to cut some things.
I would also probably be voting no if we don't add, if I would prefer to just let it go. So Ms. Carter-Oh.
That does make sense. I'm I'm in favor of modifying the motion. I am also more interested in the presentation. And I'm okay with us cutting this contract right now. What's worrying me more is that this is that we've had a vendor that we've had a contract with that we've been paying, that we've not been getting the work that is in that's outlined in the contract or we don't know. And Dr. Lewis, I hope that like moving forward, this board needs to be able to count on the fact that like you and your cabinet are taking responsibility for everything that goes underneath them. And then if we have a contract, we're getting the work that is outlined in the contract in exchange for the money that we're putting down. And so I guess I'm wondering what's it going to take to get to that point where the board can trust that that's going to happen?
I'll just tell you from my, well, a short time, my time here, this is not the first conversation that I've heard about us not getting a return on an investment. I thought at one point prior, we were moving forward to to cancellation because we were not getting. And so, yeah, I I definitely hear you in terms of that feedback.
Can I entertain an amendment to the motion?
Oh, I I am willing to amend the motion. We clearly have to resolve this. But I, too, am interested that we are here to support you in making difficult decisions, whether it's February twenty twenty-four or whatever. Please bring us something that's a little more robust than trust us because that's what you're asking us to show the community at a time when we have had students begging for sustainability leadership in our district. And so you've put us in, you know, we're in a difficult place. We've had a vendor that that at least early on showed significant energy reduction. And utility bills are raising. We're expecting one of the things you're bringing, I think, in your next slide deck is Duke Energy rates going up, right? I mean, we're trying to do more daylighting. We're trying to do more sustainability. We're trying to throw solar panels on the roof. We're trying to actually lead nationally. And so if this is not a piece of it, I wish we would have seen it in February of twenty-four. So I will amend the motion to to add site logic to this list of of canceling contracts. But I still will leave the part, if you all are amenable, to sometime in January, work session or board meeting. Hopefully, there will be a robust start of a conversation about climate sustainability, leadership in DPS and our planning going forward. Is that?
A plan? Maybe not a a conversation that goes along with a plan?
Transparency getting this this move in, yeah. And because it goes along with the CIP, it goes along with the bond, it goes along with how we're fixing things and how we're teaching students about sustainability in the classrooms. And so that's, that's fine.
Ms. Chavez?
I'll just say one more thing, which is I do agree we should have some evidence. And I was actually, I had stepped away. But I was going to ask about the process by which you all were determining, like the metric, the metrics or whatever. What is what is the process for determining you don't need this, we don't need this anymore? So I I do, I do support that, the idea that we are accountable to the community and we need some bullet points as to why we're not, you know, can't use this anymore.
All right. Oh, good.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Oh, well. Okay, so the amended motion by Ms. Byer has been seconded by Ms. Carter-Oh. Any more discussion? All in favor? Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? It is passed unanimously. Next on the agenda, flipping back and forth, is the superintendent's budget priorities, twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven budget priorities. And Lewis? Mr. Teeter?
Okay, thank you. So we will, these are, these are conversations. So as we go into this into this presentation, right? These are conversations that you've kind of heard from this administration before. Our colleagues are wrestling with what I see as historic circumstances in school system finance. And so these are all things that were kind of taken under review as as we proceed with this budget cycle and sort of the pressures that we have to contend with and plan for. And so in the next slide, we sort of lift up the continuation aspect of the budget, right? So we we were often in front of you talking about continuation and expansion. And so, one, it's just important to to lift up once again, right? So there was no, at this point in time, state budget adopted and 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 no state raise in tandem with that as a result of that lack of action. And we don't really expect one. And and so we're just kind of looking at the political headwinds there and anticipating that in the short session this spring, we'll likely hear conversations around larger raises to make up accounting for just the season that we're entering into in two thousand twenty-six and and the absence of action in in the long session. And so we're bracing for that and looking, you know, we may, we're we're looking really in the territory of a five to six percent type of conversation, just kind of based on these trends and and where we are. And there are certainly some contentious primaries coming up on on the majority side of the aisle that I think will elicit interesting proposals. We are also looking at, right? So we're we're approaching our first year, completing our first year with a new state treasurer who has been very public facing in conversations around bringing solvency to the state retirement system, bringing solvency to the state health plan. And we've seen really some historic reform in in how the state health plan is administered. And I think it's important to lift up, right? In this, in in December, paychecks are will be the first paychecks where our employees across the state of North Carolina will start contributing to the state health plan on the sliding scale model that was adopted by the state health plan board. And so we're bracing for more of that just based on the state treasurer's commentary. And I think we're certainly also bracing for that our contribution will continue to increase that we're that we're putting into that plan. And so so just retirement contribution and and health plan contribution are two spaces that we're looking at very closely as we compute what our continuation costs are for us to exist as we are. Also, right, we've seen in the headlines and we just talked about this. We're seeing in the headlines that Duke Energy soliciting a fifteen percent increase in the rates that they charge in North Carolina. You know, those often come with contentious public hearings. And and I don't envy the work of the state's utility board or commission as they work through those proposals. And so we have to sort of prepare for that worst-case scenario that we may be, bless you, that we may be wrestling through fifteen percent, fifteen percent increases, right? In in our in our energy costs, irregardless of our consumption. Also, what we're watching very carefully is the potential loss of federal and Medicaid funding. So, you know, for for practical purposes, I think myself and my colleagues across the state are are thinking very heavily about the the titles two, three, and four funds that the executive branch attempted to seize this past season and was not able to do so because Congress had already authorized the funding. So we're anticipating strategy that Congress will be pressured to not authorize it this time. So that that's something that we're thinking about very carefully and will reflect in the superintendent's budget book, that the very important work that happens in Durham Public Schools from those funding sources and the need to find a way to continue those activities. In Medicaid, we have a little more lead time with that work, right? So we are funded for those services that we provide in arrears for Medicaid. And so we would, if we see some dramatic shift in our Medicaid dollars, we've we feel good about having a year or so to pivot to respond to that particular element. But want to keep it in the forefront as as something that we're monitoring. And those dollars are really essential to us in that we reinvest that into services for our EC students throughout the district to continue to provide necessary services there. The next section, we lift up expansion. And at the time that we prepared this presentation, we had received over seven million dollars of requests on the next slide for the superintendent and his team to contemplate. That that process is now closed, sort of in tandem with this presentation. And we're now looking at closer to fifteen million dollars in in new requests. And so, thank you, colleagues. And so we are working, working with Dr. Lewis in a process to evaluate those and and prioritize those to see where they they fit in the puzzle. But keeping in mind that that, you know, that that's three million dollars or so greater than what we received in an increase from the county in this most recent cycle and something we want to be mindful of. I think it's important, too, to lift up that this week the the county budget department conducted a kickoff meeting for the budget season with their county departments. We were invited to participate in that and hear the same information that the county departments received. And so they, on on the county level, the departments have been sort of given a guidance, I would say, to to come back with reduced budget requests compared to previous years. And so just sort of reading some additional tea leaves in that, in addition to, right, the remarks that we heard at the most recent joint meeting from the county manager. So this is something that weighs on us as as we go through this process and think about what we ultimately ask for and and how we prioritize. On the next slide, we spent some time having a conversation with Dr. Lewis about. uh things that are particularly important to us. And so I think our continuation aspect of our budget is critical, um particularly knowing um the the federally funded initiatives that are at risk uh in ensuring uh that we have the resources to continue that important work. Um, and and we will be detailing um what those activities are um in in his budget book and and lifting up the impact to the district um a- as a result of these historic federal dollars, right? The, these are federal grants that have existed uh for quite some time, uh in particular, titles two and three. Title four has, is a new one that's come about during my career as a finance officer, but still, it it's been around close to a decade now. Um, we're in the K twelve space. Uh, classified pay um is high on the superintendent's list of priorities. Uh, and so uh we have had a couple of cycles where we've been able to increase uh the teacher supplement in Durham Public Schools and looking at a cadence of shifting some focus back to classified pay. Uh, it's a space where we've had a lot of conversation already. It's a space that we hear um quite a bit of advocacy um from our educator association. And so that um is is high on the list of something that's important to us as we move forward in this work. Um, and then third, um, sort of our capital outlay needs and and sort of in the broadest sense of capital outlay, thinking about our facilities, thinking about our technological infrastructure, um, all the, all the way down to the level of devices that we're using in in delivering instruction um for for adults and and for and for students. Uh, so there's, um, these are three kind of key spaces uh for Dr. Lewis. But we um, we do have a process um that we are certainly running through um to think about this. And so on the next slide, um, we lift up uh some pertinent dates. And so it might not quite be tomorrow. We've got some interpreting that's still going on or translating that's still going on um for our thought exchange. Um, so we um, in 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 just the next couple of days, we'll be opening up the thought exchange like we did last year uh to solicit feedback uh from the community on our, on priorities and hearing what the budget priorities are for folks um who might not necessarily come to the meetings. And I think last year, we saw significantly greater participation in the online exchange compared to what we saw with the in-person commentary. So you definitely wanted to make sure we push this out. Um, and that um thought exchange opening will accompany the kicking off of Dollars and Decisions again. And so we're, we're back for year two of Dollars and Decisions. I'm working very closely with the Public Affairs Department to push out um educational information and continuing uh to um offer that transparency that folks are seeing around our decision-making processes with our dollars. So um, I'm excited to see what Ms. Cooper puts me through this season. So we will um, from there, we're anticipating that the thought exchange will close in early January so that we can evaluate those responses and and have something in front of the board uh at the work session uh in January. In tandem with that thought exchange feedback, uh, we will come forward with some feedback uh from the uh January eighth meet and confer meeting with the Educator Association and have that layer uh to lift up. The, we will also be meeting with the Teacher Advisory Council and the Parent Ambassadors. That meeting hugs a little bit too close to the work session, and so that feedback will lift up in the second meeting in January. We have another opportunity for meet and confer on January twenty second to continue conversations uh with our Educator Association. Um, and then um, January twenty ninth, um, w- we will push out uh the first draft of Dr. Lewis's recommended budget book um with the detail that the board's accustomed to receiving and our community is accustomed to. We really need um in in the, in terms of February, really sort of looking to the board um to be thought partners with us uh in how we can further solicit community feedback. And so we see uh some neighboring uh districts um are are constructing sort of some town halls around finance in general. Um, and I I really did like the the model that Chapel Hill Carboro is moving forward with to explain uh the impacts of declining enrollment and what it means for money and services in their district um and and sort of forward thinking in that way. Uh, so certainly staff um is amenable to some sort of town hall um or pairing that with or just only doing it uh with a um traditional public hearing where the folks come to us and and offer comments in a special period. So uh, we're, we're open to whatever format um might be most amenable to the community uh and really want that turnout. We really would like to see more folks kind of come in person uh a- and share their perspective. And and uh knowing that we're in election season, we may get it this time. Um, and so um, looking at a March twelve target um to get something in the county's hands, uh, that sort of lines up with the county manager's expressed desire at the joint session to have something in early March. Uh, and so that will uh be progress for us um as a school system to get that to them after uh the meeting in March rather than in April or May. So uh looking to sort of honor our progress towards that uh agreement that we have with the county to get something to them in March. So I've said enough there, and so happy to open it up for questions at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter. Word members, I see Ms. Rogers.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I think my first question would be around the dates of the thought exchange. Um, particularly, it gives one week of school time. Uh, is there any ability to extend it?
Yeah, we can, we could certainly do that. Uh, so I think if we can uh, I would be fine uh lining that closure up with the January eighth meet and confer potentially. So um, I'll already be working on um evaluating their feedback from that meeting. And we can just take care of that as a package deal in preparation for the work session. So we're, uh, staff can work to extend that to January eighth.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I'm not gonna read all my questions, because I sent some questions late this morning that didn't make it into our document. If y'all could just respond to them later, that would be helpful. But um, wh- where, when in this process are evaluations and modifications uh being made to realize a cost, realize a cost savings for the district on current operations? Is that happening? Where does that happen as part of this budget process? I don't know. You don't need to write all this down. I promise, I emailed it this morning, okay? You don't need to write it. And then uh as a follow-up, is is board action needed? In any of those modifications to realize any of that modification? Uh, I think the really important part is something that came up a few minutes ago uh was the question I asked around, when will the board have the opportunity to review? Will the board have the opportunity to review the CIP plan and the technology plan before deciding on the capital outlay budget request? So we can kind of decide where the priorities lie?
The first question's easier and a little more in uh my ability to answer. And I'd say, right, tonight, we've sort of seen Exhibit A, right, of of the work that we're doing to evaluate opportunities to save costs. And we think about, um, right, so those first two contracts that were on the list in the, in the previous presentation, um, we've canceled them for the balance of what was left this year. Uh, we move into next year, most likely not entering into those contracts at all and have the capacity to save the full value of those contracts, right? And so we're continuing to press into those items. Uh, I know that uh in my conversations with Dr. Lewis, um, you know, looking at spaces um where um we maybe have duplicated efforts um in instruction and and in items in that space. Uh, and so it's been a long time since I was in the academic world, so I'm not gonna push into his lane too much. Um, but um, opportunities there, right, and some evaluation occurring there. Uh, and then we're always, um, you know, I know my colleagues and myself included uh are thinking about our departmental operations and how we can continue to be more nimble um in the work that we're doing. And so, yeah, it's ongoing and and we anticipate um reflecting that in in the superintendent's recommended budget, right? Opportunities uh for us to to tighten some things up. And uh, it's possible um for some of those items, we'll be asking you to take sort of some separate actions along the way um a- ahead of adopting the the recommended budget um to to make all that materialize. Yeah, so you'll see some phases of things. Part two, uh, with the tech plan in the CIP, I don't want to push into my colleague's shops there. And so I'll just, I'll defer to my colleagues to sort of address uh the technology plan and the capital improvement plan. I think we're, we're very close. We're, we're hoping that um we'll be ready to bring that plan um by the uh first meeting in February, uh if not the second meeting in January.
That's the tech plan, not the capital improvement plan, right? It's okay.
Mr. Barnes? Go ahead, answer. You know.
Capital improvement plan.
Update, when, when, when the board can get an update on capital improvement plan?
I think Ms. Mitchell has a meeting uh coming up soon. I'll get that date back with you tomorrow, uh, but I know she has one scheduled.
We'll make sure we get that answered in the, in the document.
Is there a request from the board or do you? Will we be able to see it before we finalize the budget? So that it, so that it's included as part of, so we understand what portion of it we're covering with the request for the capital outlay investment?
So the answer to that is yep.
Or, or that, what is it, the facility, what is it that we're doing? That plan?
The capital improve, I, I do remember from the capital improvement plan meeting that she does have a timeline for being able to bring that information to us prior to us making decisions on budget.
Because that's how we would be able to say, okay, these are the things we want to prioritize, like in a bond and how to prioritize capital investment. And to say, these are the long list of things that we still need to get done, that we don't, we're not asking for right now, right?
Is, is it capital improvement plan for the bond or for the budget? Like my, it was my understanding, I could be wrong, that the capital outlay is kind of the maintenance of the date year-to-year kind of work, which is different than the capital improvement plan, but it could be all the same.
They're, they are different, but we have a schedule for both of those. And I'd be glad to get those, that schedule to Dr. Lewis so he can share with you guys.
I think you just want assurance, the board just wants assurance that Dr. Lewis will ensure that his staff provide the board with this information so they can consider it during the budget process. Is that accurate? Nope, okay.
That is accurate to the extent of if the capital improvement plan is intended for the bond, I don't want to rush that to the board to inform the budget. So whatever portion of that we need to inform the budget request is, is what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so basically what you're saying is you don't want to put, and I'm just using this as an example, five million dollars for roofs if it's in the capital improvement plan?
Ms. Byer?
So, Mr. Teeter, I, I appreciate all the work. And I wonder if our staff understand the grim position we're in if they have requested fifteen million dollars in expansion. And so I wonder if there's still some work to be done internally with folks. I don't know where all those expansion requests are coming from. But it might be worth, I mean, you're seeing districts across the state face the reality that we are facing. We can't have another year where we're scrambling mid-year. I know you don't want that, Dr. Lewis and Mr. Teeter, y'all. So I don't know how, how or where y'all are gonna have ongoing conversations with staff. I know we need to continue to to level set ourselves because we want all the things in Durham. And what it, what's, what I don't see in here is actually because of our enrollment decline, we're looking at thirty-seven less instructional positions. Is that the number, uh, thirty-seven? So that's a reality check for our schools. It's about one person per school or three-quarters of a person. So do y'all have plans between now and that reality check? And and I'm, I say it to, to ourselves, too, like, I'd love to be in here on this classified pay raise to also put in there and have y'all model at least the living wage matching the county, the starting county living wage, that one thing that we can't quite get in sync with them about. And I'm trying not to add things to this list because this list is too big to begin with. So that's what I'm wondering, how, how y'all are thinking about
So we've
the reality check.
So just, you know, ju- going through sort of the um, the requests received, right? So Dr. Lewis and I have had conversations about uh pulling the requesters through to have conversations, right? To press in on, right, is this, is this nice to have? Is this must do? Um, is this something that, right, you're looking to spread across three to five years? Is this something that's a next year thing, right? So we, we've got some additional vetting uh that we're gonna put folks through, right, to to get questions answered around those requests and and really help us shape um the most prudent requests possible.
Does it go to allotments as well? Like, are we gonna have some more tough allotment conversations? And do we need principals to have a heads up that that's also?
I think they're feeling, they're feeling it right now, right? And so I think in the, in the work that we're doing, um, right, to make sure we're whole this year. Uh, and so we're um right around the corner, right? So that's a Christmas break activity for me, right, of forecasting, you know, e- enrollment, right? And so we'll be looking at um just sort of building sort of some draft projections of of what that might look like for our schools. Uh, and, you know, we started um, you know, last, last season, you know, we moved the ball down the field a little bit to get kind of closer um to how we're funded. And so we'll spend some time looking at that again, but certainly that's an, an aspect. Uh, and then also sort of working with Dr. Lewis to also not lose sight of that vision um of of still finding ways to provide extra supports outside of that where they're, where they're needed um for some of our schools. So um, but definitely, it's a piece of the conversation. And as we have um sort of that presentation in January, right, we'll be talking a lot about sort of the, the guts of all of these things. And all that work is happening simultaneously when we're looking at inward at district level budgets and um analyzing our hiring freeze and do we need to hire certain positions? Yeah, in addition to that, and as we think about the expansion items, yeah, there are some um, some nice to haves on, on that list. And there are some, some areas that, you know, we have to think about um our students in in that regard. And I, I think we also talked about maybe engaging our superintendent student advisory council in some of these conversations as well. So for example, on one of those expansion items that we haven't purchased, um, I think it's art or either music textbooks in probably over twenty years. And so we have to think about the instruction that we're giving to our students uh in in the arts. So it's a lot of competing values there as well, but um, yeah, fifteen million, probably won't see that in the book.
All right, I hear a, oh, Ms. Carter Otten?
Thank you, and um I, I appreciate all the different opportunities that you've put in here for feedback from different stakeholders. Um, and uh, I really like the idea of the administration and board getting out in the community more to talk about the reality of our fiscal situation, help people understand so that when we have to make tough decisions, they understand better. But also, re- relatedly, I guess, I'm wondering, like, the thought exchange, I, I like thought exchanges as a tool. And I'm wondering, like, what are we asking? Are we just asking, like, what do you want in your budget, if you could dream big? Or are we doing, like, hey, would you prefer this or this? Or something a little bit more targeted to get some targeted feedback from our community? Which goes along with the lines of setting expectations for what the, what's possible.
Ms. Cooper's gonna come to the microphone.
Good evening. Uh, the current thought exchange is set up to ask what the priorities are of our community as we inform the upcoming budget for next year. There could be an opportunity for us to be a bit more granular. As the platform is set up, it does ask for main ideas from individuals and others within the community who are participating can add uh validating remarks or they can rank them or like them to get general consensus around what are the top priorities of those within the Durham Public Schools community. I can certainly go back um to our thought exchange partners because they've been fantastic in helping us uh really leverage the tool to get the information and data that we need to be successful. Um, so I'm happy to have a conversation with them about how we can elevate this to truly get more data to help inform our decisions.
Word members, I, I hear a pause. Everybody, is there any, anything else before we move on? Next item in the agenda? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Teeter. Next, we have our Legislative Steering Committee member selection process. I'll turn it over to Ms. Rogers.
Hi, y'all. So we have some respondents to our requests for Legislative Steering Committee. There are some targeted spaces. We do not have. Responses. I'm not sure the bulk email that I sent went out. I'd like. For Joy and I would have worked together to send out some strategic, specific. Emails to each, I'm sorry, Ms. Haragoff, apologize. To get re, a response from certain members of our community. DPS Foundation didn't respond. Chamber didn't respond. And it makes me question if they actually received the email. And I'd like to extend it so that we are going to the January work session. And then be, be able to randomly select from the group of applicants. Are y'all okay with that? That's the ask. Ms. Cooper, can I make an ask of you? Would you in, have. Another links to social media posts, et cetera, that went out? And information that went out to Sparky, in the Spark email? Could you include that information in Dr. Lewis's weekly updates so board members can disseminate that information on their platforms? Even if it's just a link to those? Because I think that would help us get some traction. And then I've set up an example of a wheel of names if y'all wanted to see it. Another hour is late. You're welcome to. Click the example on the pricey. Not coming up for you? Oh, you can't do it from here? The school system has blocked it. Ms. Smith was able to pull it up. If she wants to share it on the screen, she can show you what it looks like. I've populated our names for every category that. Is in the form, people will be able to be entered on that wheel. So we will have a DAE one, a Durham Chamber one, a PTA one, a parent one. Superintendent they designate, should they apply? We'll also get a wheel and everybody will go on the wheel. On every wheel that they're eligible for or for every box that they have checked. And if they're selected for like the Board of Education seats, then they would be removed from the parent seat. So you can't fill two seats. But we would spin a wheel for all 13 seats. Ms. Smith, will you spin the wheel and see who comes up? And when she spins the wheel, you can see everybody's on the wheel, so it's transparent. The public can see it happening in real time. And. And then we would move to the, we'd have each one of those set up ahead of time and we'd move to the next wheel of names. So I would also like us to, as we move into this process, consider alternates. In case people say, oh, this isn't what I thought it was. I don't want to participate or I am overwhelmed. And can't participate in this process at this time. So that we don't have to come back to the drawing board to, back to the board table to select new folks. But again, we'll do that in January, the work session. Just wanted to make sure there's an update. And I will turn the form back on. I did turn it off at the agreed-upon time. But I will turn it back on. Thank you all.
Board members, do you have any other comments? I just want to say that I like the, it's just that little wheel is fun. Can we put some more fun things into our work? Right, I love it. The next thing on the agenda is for, for information only. And then do we have any summary of follow-up items?
All right. For, for Policy 5120. Policy Committee will explore appropriate wording in policy about how interpretation will be provided when language. Services are needed by an outside law enforcement agency. Seek further discussion about interpretation services in January 2026 work session. Policy Committee, should, should we clarify how 5120 is addressing RE SROs versus other law enforcement? Example Chapel Hill 5120 for separate SRO policy versus another policy for law enforcement. And I think there's already an answer for that one. No, it's, it's, it's open. Then to Policy 5023, emergency use of naloxone. Changing wording in the policy that names school, but will also, but this will also cover other DPS. Buildings, SDC, central services, et cetera. Do we want to extend the policy to refer to schools and buildings rather than just schools? A couple in succession here. Add wording to require superintendent to ensure at least two devices. Remove only, remove section I through the form and. Include three DPS staff or more as people who should be trained. Does the number of people trained include SRO or nurses? Since these are not staff, I think we answered that one. Bring back for second reading to the January work session on consent agenda. And can we address the issue of EPIPANs being locked or unlocked in schools? And identify a point person at each school to develop a, a plan. Or. Plan, Strategic Plan Priority One update. Is there an opportunity to partner with after-school or summer programs to support outcomes for students and student learning? Calendar for regular updates, reports at the beginning of the agenda. And move the reports to the beginning of the agenda. Qualitative data, can we include some qualitative data in, in. Reports that come forward in the future? And how do we enhance build upon the strategic plan? On finance update, further, further analysis of the SiteLogic contract amount and savings? Are there other contracts that can be reviewed perhaps from academic services? Question as to if we still. If we will still be able to do the work that is connected to the contracts that are being canceled, i.e. will the grass be cut? How much would it cost or what would be the impact if the board directed the administration to hold off? On cutting all of the identified contracts until next month? I think we addressed that one though, did we not? We resolved that one.
Are these minutes or are they? Follow-up items?
They're, they're, they're follow-up items. Sometimes we put them in before they get addressed and, and, and so. I'll mark through that one. Yeah, I think so. So the superintendent's budget priorities, dates of the thought exchange, I think that's addressed. What's the process for determining cost savings? Opportunity to review IT plan and CIP before the final budget. And plans to further engage staff or own realities of budget expansion. And then finally for the legislative committee, extend the deadline and share information with comm- community. And the board for, to further solicit participation.
And then there was an addition on for the committee for Ms. Cooper, I think to add the links to the superintendent's update?
Yeah, that's what he was just talking about.
Okay.
And the CIP schedule too.
Joy.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Ms. Haragoff.
Ms. Byer, oh, well, not Ms. Byer, Laura Helm, it's late, y'all.
Okay.
I want to call everybody by their first name.
Doctor, it's, do that, that's fine.
Chair Umstead and then Ms. Rogers.
Dr. King, we pulled the calendar. Because of the answer to my question. I think it's important that families are able to get. A version of the calendar that is as most correct as possible. So removing it from the agenda tonight allows the change to be made and reflected on those calendars and then brought to the board. So if you'll bring those to the board in January, that was not on the next steps list, but that's, okay.
With you.
Thank you.
Just want to add one next step. On the budget timeline, there is a gap for budget hearing date in February. And if we can go ahead and start scheduling that now, that'd be great. So we can go ahead and put it on the calendar. So we can have Ms. Smith work to schedule that. It'd be awesome. Schedule the budget hearing for February. Hopefully by the January work session, we have a date.
All right, everyone. Are we ready to entertain a mo- a motion to go into closed session?
I'm moved we're going in closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Second. Been moved by Chair Umstead, seconded by Ms. Chavez to go into closed session. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Be opposed? It passes unanimously. You're now in closed session. Oh, am I supposed to say we will not return after closed session? We will not return to the live stream. So thank everyone for being here.